Welcome to the Saturday, February 3rd, 2024.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Avery is currently absent.
All right. We'll start with the invocation by Councilmember Grant, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Blum.
Good morning. It's an honor to be here today along with my city council members and great the members of the public and our staff. We're so grateful for our city staff, all of our community activists, and anyone else who is interested in the City of Newport Beach and thriving here today and in the future. And we're very grateful to have such a wonderful opportunity to enjoy our Oasis Center and all the other amenities in our city. And today's planning session will go further in establishing so many wonderful opportunities for our city. We thank you so much.
Please join me in the pledge to our great country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first off, thanks everybody for being here. I know you're away from families on a Saturday morning, so we'll try to keep this efficient. Goal today is going to be talking about a lot of different priorities and goals for the city. You all play a role in that, so I appreciate that. And as Councilmember Grant said, to our members of the public, thank you for being here. As I look out, I'm realizing most of the members of the public have been very active members of the public already, so I appreciate you being here. This is the first time we've had this planning session inside the Oasis Senior Center. It was, we chose this because I think it's really helpful to be out and about when we're doing the planning sessions. We get to spend a lot of time at City Hall. So being out here, hopefully this is not your first time being here, but if it is, welcome. The, actually, Councilmember Grant and I were here yesterday for the general meeting for the Friends of Oasis. The room was full, so this is certainly a good testament to the value we place on the Oasis Senior Center and our senior community in general. So moving forward, we're going to roll right into the update on financial status and budget development. By the way, for my fellow councilmembers, since we don't have a touchscreen today to let me know that you'd like to speak, I will try to look at you, but if I have a missing question, just kind of just yell at me. So we'll make sure we stop and move forward with questions. So anyway, with that, I'll turn it over to Grayson and Jason.
Yes. Right. Thank you, Mayor. All right. I don't know what it says about me, but this is one of my favorite events of the year. And I think it's because we, you know, we work so quickly and, you know, just really driving ahead in our council meetings, getting all the items on there to move through. And this is a time to just kind of take a little time to think through some items and talk through it and have a discussion and really help inform us as we do up our next budget. So it's a good time for us as staff to get good input from the council. So you can see from the agenda, we're looking at starting it off with our finance side of things and our revenues. Then we're going to move into our capital project program. And this year, we're not so much focused on the specific projects. That's going to come in March when we do our early look. This is a little bit of a higher level up of how we do our general planning for our projects. And I think it's going to be, you know, we have, we're an older city, lots of infrastructure to maintain and a lot of new projects going on board too. So I think it's going to be a really good discussion to talk through that piece of it too. And then we'll go back into our operating side and talk about some of the particular areas that we've been hearing interest on, on our operating program. So as the mayor said, I want to keep things moving, so I'm going to turn it right over to Jason, our Finance Director, to kick things off.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Okay. So the preliminary revenue outlook for the general fund for fiscal year '24, '25 reflects an $8 million increase that is largely due to projected increases in growth from property tax revenue, sales tax revenue, and transient occupancy tax revenue. Revenues in the current year, fiscal year '23, '24, are projected at $308 million. That's actually approximately $5 million in growth over the prior year, and that equates to 2% growth in fiscal year '22, '23. So if you compare the growth of $5 million compared to $8 million, we're projecting more economic expansion and growth in fiscal year '24, '25. Okay. So property tax revenue is projected at $149 million next year, which is $5 million or 3.5% higher and is due to the Proposition 13 inflationary adjustment and is also due to changes in ownership and new construction. Property tax revenue has increased by $38 million over the last six years. This equates to an average annual growth rate of approximately 5%, which is compounded annually over the past six years. The 7.7% growth seen in fiscal year '22, '23 was based on assessed values as of January 1st, 2022, which was driven by home sales in the prior calendar year, so calendar year 2021. In 2021, home sales peaked, which was just before the Fed started their rate hike campaign in March of 2022. So as you'll see on the next slide, the number of homes sold over the last two calendar years has been roughly half of what they were in 2021, which is why the growth in assessed values and property tax revenue is lower in fiscal year '23, '24, and fiscal year '24, '25, yet still reflective of moderate growth. So 85% of our property tax revenue is derived from residential home values. Due to Proposition 13, increases in assessed values are generally limited to 2% except for changes in ownership and new construction. When home sales are sold or undergo renovation, assessed values are readjusted, which is what drives growth over 2%. However, this growth is affected by interest rates, which are currently, they're currently as high as they were in 2000, which is at the peak of the dot-com boom. So property tax revenue for fiscal year '24, '25 is based on assessed values as of January 1st, 2024, which is driven by property sales that took place in calendar year 2023. Home sales are roughly half of what they were when they peaked in 2021 and substantially lower than the average number of home sales over the past 10 years. Nonetheless, property tax revenue is a much more reliable and consistent source of revenue compared to sales tax revenue. So sales tax revenue is directly affected by changes in consumer spending. In fact, we've never seen a decline in assessed values over the last 20 years, even during the Great Recession, which is a significant contributor to the city's fiscal stability. So next year, we are projecting 5.9% growth in sales tax revenue. However, this is largely due to a bounce back from the 6.2% decline in fiscal year '23, '24. So in '23, '24, we're projecting to be down 6.2%. This is largely due to a decrease in sales from autos and transportation and the state and county pools. In fact, most industry groups are down in fiscal year '23, '24 except for restaurants and hotels. Statewide, sales from autos are down 3%. So therefore, the shift in consumer spending that we're seeing locally here in Newport Beach is consistent with what's happening statewide. However, the decline in '23, '24 is exacerbated by a drop in sales tax revenue due to a luxury auto dealership that has temporarily closed their showroom while they embark on an 18-month construction project. So this is partly why we're seeing a bounce back in fiscal year '24, '25.
It's still not, it's still not, it's barely up to '21, '22. I don't know what, I don't know what to do with this one.
It's a little in and out.
Like this? All right. So the, so I guess the question is, why? You're about to answer it. It's just, it's surprising to me that two years, three years later, we're still not, I mean, we're flattened out from '21, '22. So where, you know, where can we, where's the stimulation that we can, we can help out on this?
Yeah, so maybe this slide will help explain this a bit. You can see there's three years of revenues in each of the categories. You've got our main categories, 85% of our revenue is derived from these four categories: autos and transportation, restaurants and hotels, general consumer goods, and state and county pools. And so if you look at the three fiscal years that are reflected, you've got the prior year, fiscal year '22, '23, the current year, fiscal year '23, '24, and then the next year, '24, '25. So I did want to highlight that the two categories on the far left, autos and transportation and restaurants and hotels, those two categories alone make up actually roughly half of our sales tax revenue. So those are large drivers and underlying economic activity. You can see in fiscal year '23, '24, pretty much across the board, every single category is projected to be down. And that is due to what we're seeing statewide, at least, and perhaps even nationally, a shift in consumer spending. It's not necessarily an overall decrease in consumer spending, but a shift away from taxable goods to entertainment and travel, other categories that are not captured in sales tax revenue. And then, as I mentioned, in fiscal year '23, '24, there is that, that one luxury auto dealership that's temporarily closed their doors. So when they reopen, and they're expected to reopen in the second half of next fiscal year, then there's a comparable offset to that sales tax bounce back in fiscal year '24, '25. So sales from restaurants are projected to remain strong with patrons continuing to allocate a significant portion of their food budget to dining out. In addition, we are expecting to see several new restaurants that have either already opened their doors or are expected to open in the next year, which includes restaurants like Ocean 48, Joey Newport Beach, Starfish, and even the Pendry Steakhouse and Sushi Bar. Did that answer your question?
I mean, it did. It's just, so I guess the, I guess where we're really flat when it comes down to it, we're down quite a bit on the autos and transportation still, and we're flat on the consumer goods. That's essentially what we're projecting out.
Yeah. So switching gears, looking at transient occupancy tax revenue. DOT revenue is the city's third-largest source of revenue and is projected to increase 600,000 or 2%. So coming out of the pandemic, we can see a V-shaped recovery. However, this exponential growth rate that we saw in '21, '22, and '22, '23 is tapering off. Nonetheless, the Pendry, which opened at the end of September, has already begun to add to the bottom line, which is part of the reason why we're projecting 2% growth next year. However, I did want to point out that growth from short-term lodging has flattened out. So over the four-year period, well, this chart outlines a difference. The growth rates in short-term lodging versus hotels. So over the four-year period from 2019 through fiscal year '22, '23, residential short-term lodging DOT revenue more than doubled. You never saw a decline even during the pandemic. However, short-term lodging revenue flattened in fiscal year '23, '24 as we've reduced the number of active permits and finally dropped below the cap of 1,550. On the other hand, commercial hotel DOT revenue dropped significantly in 2020 and then again in 2021 due to those state-mandated travel restrictions. However, we saw 70% growth in hotels in 2022 and then 10% growth in 2023. We're projecting 8% growth this year and about 2.5% growth next year for hotels. So roughly 3/4 of DOT revenue comes from the hotels. Although occupancy rates have not yet fully recovered from pre-pandemic highs, the increases in average daily room rates have augmented DOT revenues. The city projects it will receive $32.6 million in DOT revenue next year, which is net of the 18% paid to BMB. Other revenues consist of service fees and charges, fines and penalties, property income, and other miscellaneous revenues. We're projecting $1.7 million or 2% growth largely due to the projected growth from service fees and property income, which includes leases and parking revenue. At this point, this concludes my portion of the presentation.
Great. So just a few things, and then any comments or questions from councilmembers? This would be a good time to do it. So we're, for councilmembers not on the Finance Committee, just a quick reminder, a lot of what Jason just referenced is kind of how we're going to do a base modeling for the upcoming budget. So is it the next Finance Committee meeting where we'll be talking about the revenue assumptions?
In February this month, we'll be talking about the second quarter, which will kind of feed into a March discussion on revenues for next fiscal year.
Got it. Thanks. So the March, the March discussion will have, your Finance Committee rep will have the packet of information, which is a lot more detailed than this in terms of how all of the revenues are being projected, which will then factor into how the budget is created by our city manager. And so just an FYI to be, to be paying attention to that. So this is a high-level overview of the major funds that add up into the general fund, but the more specific breakdowns of how the budget will be created will be coming in the March meeting. Any questions or comments for just the revenue portion? Councilmember Wagon.
Yeah. On Slide 6, there, it was related to property tax. In the 11% commercial, all of us get an email like probably six times a day from some guy talking about commercial properties continuing their decline. What do we think, and are we kind of, are we building that into that discussion? Are we just kind of looking forward into, you know, the future is when it comes to commercial? You know, it's kind of taken a hit since COVID, and then we're converting a lot of it up in the airport to residential. So that could change, you know, this in the future. But just, just kind of curious what your thoughts are on, on that.
Yeah. So we actually get our data directly from the county assessor's office. And so we haven't received the data yet for January 1st, but we've received preliminary data that's based upon sales and actual valuation numbers preliminarily through December 31st. So based upon that, that data, we are projecting overall growth. But as you pointed out, I do believe there is an expected decline. I don't know what that number is though off the top of my head.
That's okay. Just probably just something to keep in mind for the future for all of us to understand that that market is struggling.
Right. And fortunately, as you can see from the pie chart too, having 85% being residential, that's our solid base. It will have some impact, but not a major impact.
Great. Thank you.
Are we surprised when we look at the STLs and you look at '21, '22, continued growth? I know you talked about the cap and everything else, but it seems like we've flattened out that eight and a half million. What was the reason for the increase for the last couple of years and then a flatten of the curve?
Can you say that again?
The short-term lodging, we see that, you know, we had some increases. Did rates just go to a certain point where it's been accepted and that's going to be where it's at going forward? I know we have the cap rates in all the lodging, but...
I do think a large part of it is the fact that the permits, the number of permits were above that 1,550 threshold for a couple of years, and we finally dipped below that for the first time just a few months ago. So that's a large part of it. The amount of revenue generating permits has reduced by probably 200 permits in the last two years.
So we're at the cap now, so you expect that to...
We are. Exactly.
And I would also say on short-term lodging, for the ones that are individually, people have individual permits, we get data on that only once a year because the reporting is once a year in October, I want to say. So that is a bit challenging to see on the trend. So as we look at different things, we might be coming forth to you about maybe a more frequent collection of that. Would make a lot of sense too, but for later discussion. Yeah.
Can you just recap again? So we added the 75 permits recently, and so we're at 1,550 total. We're not above 5, we were at over 1,600 at one point, right? And now we've gone down that much?
Yeah. So the cap set by city council is 1,550. There was additional to the, what do you call those?
Those districts.
The, the mixed use. But that still needs to go to coastal, so that is not...
1,550 is...
Is our cap right now.
Doesn't include those 75. We're just, we're just at 1,550, and we've come down to 1,550 from the over 1,600 we were at.
Yeah. In fact, we had dipped below 1,550, so there were some, I don't know if you have the numbers, Jason, a number of permits who, from the waiting list, got, got in.
Do we still have a waiting list?
Oh, we do definitely have a waiting list.
Okay. So we're still, yeah. That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
But those were, those were decreased by the number from, on the project that we had worked on late last year.
Oh, okay. Not yet, but the mayor brings up a good point. We actually, it's 1,550 total, right? Yeah, because we're going to drop the, the amount accordingly with the amount that's going to go into the mixed use. So let me make this clarify. 1,550 isn't going up in total.
Okay. All right. Okay. Dave, your portion, right?
Yeah. Yeah. We'll move over into CIP if further question.
Well, good morning. My name is Dave Webb, Director of Public Works, and thanks for coming out this morning. Welcome, council. We're going to spend a little time this morning talking about our long-term planning projects and several of our master plans. And just for your help, if you have seen this in the back, a lot of our copies of some of our master plans we're going to talk about are in a packet in the back. We'll be referring to this as we go along. All right. So let's start in a little bit, just some basic warm-up. Capital Improvement Program is an important city document. It does a lot of things for the city. Our program sets our priorities and appropriates funds, provides a basis of project planning, and identifies potential conflicts in our plans. It develops and constructs identified public improvements and addresses significant maintenance issues. It also responds to changing priorities conditions. It's a living document, and we go through this a lot every year because it does change as we go through the years. So the question comes up a lot, how do we select projects? And there's kind of an order that we do that, but basically, our projects are identified through many ways. They're identified by the council, the community, and staff. They're developed to support program, council programs, and goals and objectives. Sometimes they come out of requirements from federal and state agencies or legal actions. And a lot of our projects come out of our planning documents, our master plans, which is something the city does really well at. And again, I tease my kids all the time. I say, you know, not having a plan is a plan to fail, or think ahead and be ahead, these common phrases. But that's what we're doing here. We're kind of looking down the road and trying to avoid mistakes and appropriate money correctly. So some of the major plans we have, there are pavement management plan, harbor plan, financing plan, bicycle plan. We're going to go through a few of the key ones today that have some decision points. The other, the other thing that we've done in the past, and I've put up here some sample council goals of the past, just to give us ideas. So council often kind of direct the city and the staff on setting priorities and goals. And we've had goals in neighborhood enhancement, if you recall. We didn't, that's how we got Babo Boulevard, Landscate, Medians, and some of our parks were through those prior goals. Encouraging private development, at one point, we had an emphasis where to make sure we're undergrounding utilities, and you've seen that all around the peninsula, Babo Island, other areas to beautify the city. We had several councilmembers years ago, and actually, not too far back, look at the tidlin's areas, and we, we've improved our boating and visitor facilities for goals. We, that's how Marina Park came about, some of our restrooms, the Central Avenue Pier, the 29th Street Pier that's being built now. One of our big goals was to dredge the main channel, channels in the lower harbor. We're still working on that. We're close. We just spent some time on that this last few days. But a goal that might be accomplished here soon. And we also, out of that, we developed a five-year tidlin fund, which is now our Harbors and Beaches master plan. That was one of the things that came out of goals. I remember back when we did transportation goals, we developed a bicycle master plan. Councilmember Petros has had a heavy involvement in that. If you look at our signal system, it is today because one of our councilmembers back, Leslie Degel, really led the charge to upgrade our signals and synchronize them. And we worked with the Orange County Transportation Authority. And it's, it's proven to be a great facility. In fact, our signal system, we put in fiber optics for it, now runs all our communications throughout the city. It has a dual purpose. So great things have come out of some of that prior leadership. And one of the goals too, we're going to talk about today because the council looked at this years ago, is to improve our pavement condition. That's why you don't see many potholes in our city. They looked forward and said, we want to set a goal for this. And they told us to get the pavement condition index up to 80. That was one of the goals, so. So looking at these various documents we have up here, and this is, this is a kind of a handful of several of the key documents. Of course, the general plan, the circulation, owner zoning plans are kind of the foundational documents that then lead to a lot of other plans, and then we build upon that. So I'm going to spend a little time today on the pavement management plan here just to kind of give you some insight how this works and how that goal brought about where we are today. And then I'll stop at each plan, and maybe we can have a little talk, council, if you have any questions on that or the community. But so one of our key goals is our pavement management plan. And this allows us to basically keep our streets in good condition and maintain our PCI. It's a tool that we use for planning. We use it to answer questions like, what do we have? What conditions it's in? How fast it's deteriorating? When do we need to repair them to maximize our pavement benefit and savings? What should we focus on? Things like that. And what if? We can do what-if policies on this. And this graph up here, a little hard to see, I apologize, but what it is is kind of the, I call it pavement 101. This is an asphalt pavement graph, and it has a lot to do with how we plan. And as we know, the most cost-effective way to maintain pavement is to keep it in good condition and not let it deteriorate. And what this graph on the side shows us is how that works. This is typical, if you look at the graph on the left side, it goes from 0 to 100. That's the pavement index scale, 100 being brand-new, 0 being basically completely failed. And that red line is the life cycle of asphalt pavement on an average. And you can see it, as soon as you put it in, it starts deteriorating. You have loads from trucks and cars, you have oxidation from the sun, weather, storms. So it's always kind of degrading. And if you get to about 15 years, you see it drops off really quick. And the notion here is that it gets very expensive. That green line is basically when we inject and we start doing, we'll see our residential tracks, we'll do slurry overlays, we'll do slurry seals, we'll start the maintenance process. We're trying to keep our pavement up there in the 80, 80, we'll say 75 to 80, but our average is 80, we want to keep it. And the reason is, it's about, if you look at that graph, it's about 35 cents per square foot to do a slurry seal. But if I let the pavement deteriorate till it's basically needs to be replaced, you're talking about $28 a square foot. It's huge. So you really want to live at that green level up there is the basic premise here. And that's why the council set a goal for us to stay in the 80 range. The good news is, all our street citywide average is 82 right now, which is really good. The cautious note is, you don't really want to be above 80 because you're really taking out good pavement. It gets very expensive too. It doesn't make sense to be 90 or 100, but 80 is a great place to be. And that's why you also see that green line. You see, we re-slurry our streets about every seven years. It keeps us in that range. It's not too far out, but it's not too soon to be wasting money. We overlay our arterials anywhere from 10 to 20-year, depending on the life cycle of that. So then, moving on into the details of the pavement management planning, it's based on projected funding. This sheet here is one of the outputs of our plan. And what you'll see here is a series of years going across. We basically show you how we fund it. And the next level is the budget level, and we started in the year '22, '23. We put about $7.9 million in, and we just project that across to '24, '25. We're going to ask that we talk about that, and then we bump it up to 8.5. But you look, the next line down is our deteriorated backlog maintenance load. And what it's showing is that if we just funded at this level, our backlog, that's the number of streets that need to be paved or addressed, starts growing. And we always have a backlog, but we're concerned when it starts growing, like in this case in '22, '23, it's 35 million. And if we project out at these levels, we get to about 41 million in '29, '30. So it's been growing. You also see the adverse effects of not keeping up with our streets because our PCI starts dropping, currently 82, we start dropping down to 79. But these are long-term trends, and the planning effort, we can, we can adjust this. So that's, you also see that in the graph below, that it kind of shows the inject of money. And as we start reducing the money, the pavement index starts dropping, and then it starts climbing again with our backlog low there. And then I added on there, just for reference, the typical annual pavement fundings we get. We get about $2.3 million in state gas tax every year. We get another $2 million in SB1 tax. And then we also have our Measure M sales tax, that's about 2.2 million. And then the general fund typically puts in about $2 million. So that $6 million you allocate to the CIP every year. About $2 million goes straight into the pavement. And the keynote to know, all these taxes, they're, they're not inflation index. They're, they're driven on like, the gas taxes are set fees per gallon. Your, your sales tax, as you know, more sales in the county goes up, like a recession comes on, it goes down. So we have to put that in note too, because it does change our fundings in future years.
So I'm not, I'm not sure I understand this. So you're saying in '22, we'll look at '23, '24. So I'm not sure I understand this. So you're saying in 22, we'll look at 2324. So in 2324 budget cycle, our budget was 7.9, is 7.9. You're saying if we wanted to do all of what would be necessary, you're saying we'd have to add another 27 million?
I apologize for the confusion. 7.9 would be, just as a model, remember. And if we just kept it at 7.9 going out, the second line is the backlog of costs of streets that need to be rehabbed, in which you see, if you have 27 there, the next year it kind of drops a little bit, then it starts climbing. So if we kept that level, our backlog of streets, streets we need to get to, starts climbing up, which corresponds then to a decreasing pavement condition. Does that make sense?
So how much do we need to be budgeting?
Well, one of the things we're going to get to is, we're going to ask that we increase it from 7.9 to 8.5. That's why that was numbers project from 24 going forward to 2930 at 8.5 budget. And we find that that's starting to turn it and bring us back, this is based on that, back towards 80. It's our PCI. It may have to be adjusted down the road. We might have to look at this again in four or five years. If we see we're still kind of going down, we might have to add a little bit more to that. A lot of things come into this model, as you know, this last couple of years, we've really seen the cost of asphalt and things really climb. So we're basically covering less streets for the same dollar. But those new costs have been put in the plan, and then the new dollar amount projection at 8.5 a year has been put in, and it looks like we're in pretty good shape. It's not decelerating, it's climbing. We get in the 80 range, and we'll have to probably look in a couple of years and see how it's coming through.
Okay. I'll be straight, I don't fully understand that one. Because the, I'm not quite sure how we funded it, a half million dollars extra, and the deferred maintenance drops or increases by, not that. But the, but I guess what I'm seeing is, by increasing it by a half million, we're going to maintain the 80 goal from the city at least up through about 2829. I would fully expect that, yes, that would definitely need to be increased by some kind of amount in about four years, but probably more. But anyway, all right, it's good enough. I don't need to understand the rest of it.
And to your point, Mary, we could use some more money. I think it could take some more. It's just about how much is available. So we recommended bringing it up to 8.5 this year. We also, oftentimes the council, there might be a grant coming along. We had some ARPA money and things that come along, and if it gets some injection, it might change that. But if there was surplus money beyond that, we could surely put some more in there and change that trajectory.
Yeah, okay.
So then the outcome of that is, as a tool, we show our residents, this is on a website, sorry. We project out then seven years on our pavement where we're going to be. And this is a useful tool because people can plan around it. You can kind of see where we're going to be in slurring, where we're going to be overlaying. I always seem to have somebody call me, we're in their neighborhood slurring, they have a big anniversary party. And we're like, well, we try to work with you and tell you, but you know, we've checked out. But it also helps, like, the utilities, when they have work to do, we really talk to them and say, make sure you get in before we get in those neighborhoods. These are the years we're going to be in there. Do the replacements, get any work you need to done, so we don't come in and cut up new streets. That's one of our goals, too. So just an output of the pavement management plan. I'll stop here for any more questions on pavement.
All right, you can keep going.
All right. So our next major plan is our facility financing plan. This is another key element. The city owns a lot of buildings, if you know, and a lot of significant size and costs involved. Sorry about my microphone cutting out now. So our facility finance plan plans for that new construction or major reconstruction of these buildings. And typically, we're looking at facilities probably over $1 million. There's no hard rule in this, but we tend to work around there. And it's also usually buildings that we need to save up for many years to get enough money to do. Let's build a new fire station. Let's build a civic center or replace something, some major things. So we put it in this plan to do that. The plan is funded basically out of new development fees, and also injection from the annual amount from the general fund of about 3% of the total general fund revenues. So I have that plan, and I know this is really hard to read on the screen, that's why you gave some copies here. But basically, this is the projects that are in the plan right now, are major proposed facilities coming up. It ranges from replacing libraries to theaters, to replacing our police station that we recently bought the property. And again, that foresight to buy that police property was a result of this plan because council could look ahead and say, we need to replace that building in so many years, and we had an opportunity to buy real estate, so we did that. And then the building will be ready to be replaced. I think it's 2032 or something like that. But we'll bring that up forward in the plan. This plan's sorted by the year from the top, when we plan to design it, to the bottom for this out. And it has most of the major facilities in. There are some that are not in there. And that little line at the bottom is our unfunded projects in there. You'll see some projects of various things we've talked about, but never really added them to the plan. So that's where the guidance from council and folks can come in. So as I mentioned, this plan has an annual 3% general fund contribution, was 9.1 this last year, which includes 8.7 in debt service. That's for the current bonds, and another 0.4 for future projects. The city also contributes an additional 5.4 million from the current structural surplus we had in 2324. And the city currently has $25 million in reserves in the FFP, of which approximately 10 million is required to fund the construction. We have the Babo Island Library Fire Station currently in the design loop, so that's the 10 millions in that plan already. And then recommending to increase this general fund contribution to build reserves, and probably need some discussion on what kind of increase we'd like to put in this plan. And that's all I have on this plan. Unless you want to add to that, Jason or Grace?
Yeah, I think we ought to jump in on that, that last discussion. So one of the things that we've been seeing is that every single time we've gone out to bid, it's gone substantially higher than the number we've been placing on the FFP for some of the larger projects. And that's been going on for the last couple of years. So I'd ask your team to take a look at, do we need to be increasing the FFP amounts? The amounts that are actually showing up on the FFP? And I'm wondering if this document in front of us represents the increased amount that we expect? Or do we need to update that when we're bringing the capital improvement program to us at council?
Good question, Mary. And I would say that Jim Houlihan and I and the team went through it, and we did adjust all the costs per square foot. And I'll post that this is a planning document. We use this to kind of get towards the target. And then from here, we move into a budget document. So the costs in here that we reflect, and you'll see it under cost per square foot or units, that project what the building will cost in the immediate future. And then there's a cost of increase in our CPI that'll take that building into the future year we're going to build it. Those have been adjusted. But again, I just caution that because we have things like our recent lecture hall. We had costs that we didn't really foresee that far down the road. But on an average year, these will be close, and I think we're pretty confident we're close. Should we not see hyperinflation or something continue?
Yeah, so when we're working through then, so since the numbers have gone up in the FFP, and although I suspect we'll see some more development up in the airport area and things like that, assuming general plan went through, doesn't guarantee that we're going to have enough development agreement to cover all of this. So in terms of, and this is maybe a Grace question, in terms of making sure that we're properly funding it, it's probably an appropriate time for us to start transferring money, more money from the general fund into the FFP to make sure that these costs are offset going forward?
Yeah, I think that's right. And you can see from this top bullet point, even though the general fund is contributing 9.1 million, the majority of that is going for debt service. So very little is actually building the reserve in there. So this fund has primarily relied on development agreement funds, which do come in, and they've been coming in, but they're, you know, the timing isn't something we can control. We are coming back to council, I want to say in late March, on development impact fees because as the new general plan gets adopted, then the development agreement side falls away. So we need to look at that piece of it. But I think to have, given the size, you look at the total value of all the projects that are sitting here in this FFP, I think having a consistent contribution from the general fund is just a matter of course to build that reserve and give the flexibility for timing of projects, too, as they come along on these significant ones, would make a lot of sense here.
Yeah. And then, so we're on the discussion here where it says the city currently has 25 million in FFP reserves. 10 is going to go to the library and fire station. Does any of that 25 account for the lecture hall that we just, so the lecture hall's already been backed out?
Yeah, exactly. That's right.
So then when we're looking forward at something like the Babo Island Drainage Project, that would come out of the FFP?
Actually, the Babo Drainage Island is coming out of the $6 million you put in the CIP every year, and a series of small projects.
So that's, yeah, but that, I mean, that's way more than, that's way more than a $6 million project.
Right. It's about 20-something, and it's going to be done over multiple years. We didn't put it in the FFP. I'm sorry, Jason.
I think it was anticipated that it would come out of the FFP fund, but it's not necessarily on the FFP financing plan.
Got it. Oh, I see. I understand what you're saying. Okay. Any questions on this before we keep moving? Okay. All right, go ahead.
Okay. So then let's stay on facilities for a minute. And we do have another master plan. Won't spend a lot of time on it, but this is our facility maintenance master plan. So once we build a facility, we need to keep it up, and there's usually major things to do. For instance, this building, we'll need to repaint, restain, we'll need to put in new floors and stuff of significant nature. So this plan allocates about 2.5 million a year in general fund to keep up our buildings. We have a lot of buildings, if you look at, I put on there, we have a total of 1 million square feet. That's about 23 acres of floor space that we maintain in the city, significant amount. And I put some projects on there, basically give you a sense of what kind of things are coming up. This is more of an inventory of all our buildings, and there's a plan that just says replacement cycling, and it comes out with a list, and we try to accommodate that list every year. Any questions on facility maintenance? Okay. Let's move on to one of our, another large plans. This is our Harbors and Beaches Master Plan. And again, this kind of came out of a prior council goal to kind of accommodate all our stuff in the harbor and the beaches and areas in the tidelands area. It used to be called a tidelands master plan. And what it looks at is the new construction, reconstruction of significant items. This could be dredging the harbor, this could be seawalls on Babo Island, or replace some of the piers. The funding is basically out of the general fund tidelands area in 2324. We have about $4.7 million in general fund annual contributions, with 5.3 million from properties and leases. That's tidelands revenue. And we have moorings or anything that generates money in the state tidelands that goes in this fund and pays towards things. The tidelands fund currently has $37 million in capital reserves in it. And again, I have a copy of the plan here, you have a copy of it. It's a kind of, it's a long plan. It has a lot of items in it. But the key takeaways in this plan are the big significant items. And there's three major items in this plan that are about 50% of this project cost. First of all, it's the Babo Island seawall replacement. We know we have to replace those walls over a period of times. Right now, the estimate to replace all three miles of walls on the island is about $136 million. We're looking at starting the design in '26 on the first phase. That's down towards the west end, I think, if that's correct, Jim. And then we'll basically look over the years and move along. We just finished a study on that. We're just getting in the draft on that, on how the condition of the walls are. The other items in here that are large are the Newport Pier and the Babo Pier. You can see there, between those two, we're looking at $35 million. So that's about 50% of the plan. The rest of it has a lot of street-end seawalls and various other tide-related items in here. So we're recommending increasing the general fund contribution for these major projects as well. And Jason, if you want to speak to that.
When we looked at the funding for the HBMP, we felt like there was sufficient funding in place in light of the amount of monies that are deposited annually from property-related income, but then also the general fund contribution as well. And then, as Dave mentioned, there are some significant capital outlays, but we looked at the timing of those capital outlays, and we believe there's sufficient funding in place. With that said, we are looking at, or proposing, $2 million more in terms of annual funding, at least as a starting point for discussion purposes.
Yeah, and if I could add on this one, on the Babo Island seawall replacement, this 136 million, I believe, Dave, if you can confirm, when we went and retook a look, this is a significant increase from what we had in this last year of this value. And so this is not to say this is final cost, you know, things do go up and down, but they've primarily been going up. So that is a concern in this fund, because I want to say, last year, Dave, wasn't it at 70 million in that neighborhood?
It was probably around 70, 80 million. We saw a significant cost increase in the linear foot cost for walls right now. So we entered that in, as Mary said, we updated these numbers, and that's where we're showing it today.
You know, and that project will be stretched over a long period of time, but in that time period, it also could go up further. So just, we think it's pretty prudent, given these major assets here in this plan, to start putting the required contributions in to ensure the, you know, the full funding here.
How many, how many years will it probably take to do that replacement?
It could take, I think we have it over 10 years, about 10 to 15 years. And again, a bit of a living document, because if we can get a little more life out of the walls, we looked at this once before, and it has a lot to do with keeping and buttressing it in, what else is going on the island. We would try to get as much life out of that as planned, but you should plan 10, 15 years before you get it all done.
Yeah, so even under that scenario, that's at least 13 million a year. So that's not an insignificant amount of additional money into the budget. So, yeah, setting aside money now would probably be helpful for future councils. Okay.
All right, we're going to move on to our next, this is our newest plan. Our next plan is our park maintenance master plan. And the last few years, we started seeing that we had a deficiency in looking at all our projects. Actually, Mayor O'Neill helped us bring forth the thought of, let's look at all our parks, which we just completed a study on that, and see what kind of asset replacement we do do on that. And out of that, we found, of course, we have seven parks out there, approximately 250 acres of parkland we maintain. We allocated 1 million last year towards this plan, knowing it was in the works. And now that the plan is complete, we're starting to look at the plan. We're finding we have more need than we probably have money in it right now. And I gave some examples on the kind of needs we have in it. The parks have many things in it, so we have bathrooms, which might be in a different plan, but the things like backstops and irrigation systems, plantings, drinking fountains, picnic tables, playgrounds. All that has to be covered and analyzed in this plan. But when you look forward, we need about $2.3 million for at least the next years on this to start catching up on this. So our recommendation would increase the 1 million to 2.3 for this coming up fiscal year and going out to at least '28, '27, '28, when we should take another look at the plan and see how the funding is matching. Any questions on the PMMP?
Yeah, so I want to stop here for just a second, because this was something that Brad and Noah and I had put together a couple of years ago. So one of the things, I mean, you can look at this council and realize we use parks more than maybe a lot of prior councils did with a number of little kids represented up here. But the gist is, we, I've taken my kids to most of our parks, and I've seen, you know, deferred maintenance here and there, but overall, amazing parks. And I think we all know that. But instead of kind of doing whack-a-mole and pointing things out as they're coming up, this was one area we'd never really, I don't think we'd done a decent comprehensive survey, just find out, hey, where are we in terms of the overall maintenance needs? So we set this aside, and then in the most recent fiscal year, we added $1 million into the general fund, knowing that this was almost certainly going to require at least that much. So I wasn't surprised, I was a little surprised at how high the number was, but I was not surprised to find out that we needed to do more. So on this park maintenance master plan, the current fiscal year, we're going to be okay. But going into the next fiscal year, that million needs to be increased by approximately 1.3. And then as we taper off, it'll, so these five years, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but when we look at these five years, the expectation is that this will take care of a significant chunk of it over the next, I guess I should say, four years, a significant chunk of the maintenance side. And then that amount will no longer, will almost certainly no longer be above 2 million. It'll drop down pretty quick. But it's really those, over that four-year spread, we've really got to increase the amount to take care of the parks the way that people would expect us to be.
That's correct. That's our anticipation.
I just quickly wanted to say, I commend the previous council for doing this park audit, which I understand had not ever been done. And I'm sure we don't need to do it now for some time again, but hopefully, we can work it into some long-term plan, as you have done with all of the other projects and things that we look at on a regular basis, figure out what the right period of time to add that in. But I'm glad that we did it, and that we are now looking forward to making some of those improvements.
Yeah, and I am, too. And none of this is particularly, and we, it's not like we're going to be doing a significant amount of ribbon-cutting on this stuff when we're talking about, you know, pedestrian concrete and chain link fence replacement and shade structures. But this is the kind of stuff that really matters for our residents, and especially as we're trying to continue to make sure we've got... But this is the kind of stuff that really matters for our residents and especially as we're trying to, you know, continue to make sure we've got the diversity of, you know, experiences across the city. Parks are a huge part of that. I actually didn't even realize we had 250 acres of park space until this slide. So that's, that's pretty amazing. One thing I do want to highlight real quick, actually, Sean, would you mind jumping up for just a second? So for fellow council members, one of the things that we've been spending time on over the last four or five years has been trying to find more ADA access at parks. Would you mind talking to San Miguel for just a second?
Sure. Uh, so over at San Miguel Park, we, we're designing a project right now. We're actually having a, another public meeting on the 13th of February. If you'd like to join us at 4:30, 4:30 in the afternoon. And also on our website, we have a survey if you'd like to give input. But what we're, what we're doing is a fully inclusive playground. We don't have one of those in the city. So the idea is somebody, for example, in a wheelchair could use every element in the, in the playground and get to it and use it. So we're pretty excited about that. So if you'd like to be a part of that, we're going through that design process right now.
Awesome. Thanks, Sean.
Quickly, Sean, since you're up here, can you just tell us what the lighting need is at Bob Henry? I see that it's projected out to 2027, but I don't know, seems like lighting might be.
Yeah, I believe that's the ballard and LED and sight lighting at Bob Henry Park. Is that the, is that the project? Oh, yeah, yeah. I think that's came from a neighbor, from the neighbors wanting the lighting to be redone in the park and more lighting. I believe that's what that, that project is. Yeah.
I think my question was really more of, is it a safety, potential safety issue that should be addressed sooner rather than later?
Not necessarily. I mean, improved park lighting is great, but that park's been, I think it's a pretty safe park. It's operated that way since it's been built. But, you know, redoing it and getting it upgraded would be nice as well.
Great. Thank you.
Any others? Where does Buck Gully, is it, that doesn't fall in the parks plan, obviously?
Not, not in this well. There are amenities down there, but that's done through another contract with Irvine Ranch Conservancy. So they take care of the maintenance as part of that contract.
Okay. Thanks, Sean.
All right. So we'll move on to kind of looking forward. So what we've talked about today is kind of the foundation of how we start developing back to the first slide, our capital improvement program. And we take the input from the council, the community, the planning here. We identify where we need to put some more money. And then we're going to start building our capital improvement plan. So with that, we're looking, as we talk today and if we do some of these recommendations, we, we need to put about 26.4 million in general funds. It's broken down into the normal 6 million we put in. We have some residual in our CIP balance of 5 million, a little neighborhood enhancement left. We talked about the facility finance plan and this year we want to put 9.6 million in. Talked about the facility maintenance plan of the 2.5 we regularly put in and the new parks plan. And we're going to raise that from 1 to 2.3 million is our recommendation here. We also have some other restricted funds like tidelands and gas tax and measurement that go into our roads and our harbor. Those are the amounts that they're, we're planning on putting in and building the budget around. And then as we, as we look forward to building that budget, we kind of made some points here, what we want to focus on. And we'd like council's input and clarification or verification. We really want to focus on our resources on the essential items this year, nuts and bolts projects, I call them. Keep the backbone infrastructure working in a good shape, our streets, pipes, lights and facilities. We want to deliver most of the key projects in our, and that are in the works. We have a huge capital program, as you know already, and there's a lot of things going. We just added another big project, the library lecture hall. And we're constantly, we're working on the new Baboia Library and Fire Stations. We'll kick off another big building project. Lot going on, but we want to make sure those get delivered. In the ocean and harbor area, we're really looking forward to completing the lower harbor main channel dredging. That was been a long effort and we think we're close to that. We've talked about Babo Island and continue efforts on the drainage there. That's in, that will be in, continued in our CIP. And also replacing the walls. We have to get started on that. I think Jim was looking at, we're, we're going to be down at the Collins Avenue Bridge this year, looking to replace that along with that west end seawall. And then we'll start moving probably to the east on that. And then ocean beaches, we know we've had a lot of tide and current issues this year. We spent a lot of time and effort. We had just recently had the Corps of Engineer project, all looking to get sand nourishment back online, getting our, our beaches in good shape. And we're also looking at maybe our growing field. It's been there since 68 that needs some maintenance. So we just did some work on that. Mayor Protamai were just in DC trying to get the federal government focused in and providing revenue for this to see if we can get these projects going. And then in our plan too, you recall, we started talking about the Newport Pier, McFadden Plaza. Mayor Bloom brought this in next, last year. We want to get working on that and start that effort would be again in the CIP. In the transportation area, we have a lot of things going as always. We want to identify our next set of community transit mobility items. We knew we have a council ad hoc that'll be looking at that, bringing the Peninsula Trolley forward into its next phase and maybe an app based application. We're thinking Corona Mar, Babo Island, Newport Center area. We want to identify strategic parking supplemental areas. We've talked about that. Not sure how that'll come out, but we need to get working towards that. And also in our facilities, we want to complete the new, and open our new Sunset View Park and Bridge. We also want to get that concept from the Baboia Library Fire Station and approve through council and then start the final design and get that under construction. And then you'll probably see right away, we've already started the work and we'll start construction of the new lecture hall. So that's kind of what we think is going to be, we're going to have in this CIP, but we want to put that to council and see where your thoughts are.
Yeah, there's a, two things I'd love to talk about. Great report, Dave. I think one thing I'd love to talk with my colleagues up here and get on the radar is Lower Castaways. Seems like as the birthplace of Newport Beach, where we were first discovered, it seems it's, it's, it's a shame that it is one of the lowest utilized lots or whatever you want to call it in our city. So I'd love to take charge and spearhead whatever that looks like going forward. I know the Harbor Commission's been working on it for a long time. I know our Parks Commission's been dealing with it as well. So I'd love to add that and have a conversation and continue to move that forward for whatever that could be in the next few years. And then we've been talking about a West Newport Beach Center, whatever that looks like as well. I can't get out of my head, the community theater area, the Avon lot, the John Wayne Park. I know we own a lot of that area and I don't know if we can better, better utilize that as well. But those are the two things with emphasis on Lower Castaways for me.
So on Lower Castaways, it strikes me that having a fresh perspective would probably be helpful. We've been banging our head against the wall, trying to figure out what to do with that for years. So that, if you want to, if you wanted to spearhead it, then why don't we just create a, you know, an ad hoc committee for council? Who would want to be on that? Any, for Lower Castaways? So Noah, Robin and Joe. All right. Uh, why don't we at the next council meeting then, or not, maybe not the next one, but at one of the next two, why don't we create an ad hoc? It'll, and with, with those council members on kind of a visioning of Lower Castaways? Cool. All right. Um, and then, yep, the West Side Community Center, that, that might be a longer discussion. But that'd be, that'd be something worth looking at. Um, any other discussions up here?
Yep.
Uh, on the question or on the topic of traffic and mobility, we're getting started, as you mentioned, on the ad hoc committee for microtransit, which is great. Hopefully lots of exciting things to come there. I'm curious if we're actively looking to acquire appropriate sites for centralized parking structures. I know in looking at the existing general plan text for CDM, for example, that there is a policy in there that says the city will look for these sites. So I don't know if that's something we're doing, but if not, I, I certainly would like to see us do that. And I'm sure that we'll be having more of those conversations in that committee as well.
And just to answer that specifically, we, that's not an active search we're doing at this point, but I, I think you bring up a good point, council member. Maybe that's something through talking through with the ad hoc committee and if we get consensus around, um, moving forward on that initiative.
Great. Yeah. That makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah. Since it seems like an ad hoc committee's already maybe been formed on Lower Castaways, I didn't, didn't speak up fast enough. But being in Council District Three, I, I just want to add a little sense of the location and that it's a high traffic area and that egress and ingress of that location. When you have your ad hoc, maybe play heavy attention to that.
Cool. Since we've been going an hour, it probably makes sense for me to, I, I know public comments are at the end, but I don't want to have public comments on the entire discussion before we keep going. So why don't we, why don't we stop now and do public comments on the first couple of bullet points, if we have any? And then we can kind of do another one at the end.
Um, uh, thank you for the thorough reports. This is really interesting and, and good information. I know it took a lot of time. So thanks so much for your effort and for your patience. So I'm wondering if the tidelands report anticipates any of the increased revenue that could be due to mooring fees that were discussed in this week's Harbor Commission meeting, the special meeting? I know that there's still a varying range of what that'll be, but it's, I don't know that it's considered here. The second thing is, um, our bicycle master plan has not been reviewed in, I don't know, 10, 15 years. And there are a lot of new types of mobility that are not considered in that plan. And I think that that needs to be reviewed. We've got e-bikes. The airport's talking about vertical takeoff vehicles, which need a place to land besides the airport. So that might be one thing. And then, um, on the park ma- parks master plan, ADA is a law. And if we aren't compliant, we are subject to lawsuits. So I'm wondering if we have considered any potential areas that we could be vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay. Uh, bringing it back, Jason, a question on the mooring rates, which, just to be clear, because it hasn't even come to us yet on any recommendation. The meeting the other night was a, didn't, didn't end in a vote by the Harbor Commission. Um, so I'm just kind of curious. It's a, it's a fair question. When we're modeling out the expenditure and revenue side on tidelands, has there been any assumption based in on mooring rate increases?
No, no, it hasn't.
Okay. Um, and then the, it's a good fair point about bicycle master plan update. Probably requires a council member to, on a A1 that one, to, to, to see if there's consensus to create an ad hoc for that. And then that's probably an errant question on the last one on the discussion about ADA. We're talking about creating ADA, like very specific ADA parks, but the question I think is, uh, that's Sean's question.
All our parks, when we refab them, they're basically ADA compliant, our rubbery surfaces, our playgrounds. We put all the ramps in, the restroom facilities have the right doors and things. That's, anytime we upgrade something, it meets current ADA requirements. And, and Tom can talk a little bit about it. We're even going to build a higher level ADA playground, maybe you want to, you mentioned San Miguel.
Yeah, I think that might've been confusing when we were talking about San Miguel. All of our playgrounds are ADA compliant. And they have elements that are accessible. This is going to be fully accessible for the entire playground. So there might've been a little confusion there, but they're all ADA compliant.
That's great explanation. Awesome. Thank you. All right. Um, do we need a break or do you want to keep going? All right, let's keep going. All right. So we're going to move into the budget development expenditures and program enhancements.
So I did want to preface that while the budget for next year is currently under development, which means, you know, program enhancement requests are currently being evaluated. And so the preliminary general fund outlook for next year is based upon a very preliminary projection. We expect to have expenditures nailed down with, by March, which will be presented to the Finance Committee in April. Nonetheless, preliminarily, general fund expenditures are projected to increase by about 6 million next fiscal year or 2%, up to 307 million. The projected growth is largely due to salaries and benefits and non-personnel costs. I did want to take a minute to talk about the pension paydown strategy. You know, about 15% of the budget is dedicated to paying down the city's pension liability. The pension paydown strategy is revisited each year. So last June, when the council adopted the budget for fiscal year 23, 24, the council approved a pension paydown strategy, which was endorsed by the Finance Committee and included a $40 million baseline payment to CalPERS towards the city's unfunded pension liability. And then an additional discretionary contribution of $5 million from the anticipated general fund surplus for fiscal year 23, 24. Based on this pension paydown plan, the unfunded pension liability is projected to be eliminated in 2032. It's actually eight years away, provided that CalPERS continues to earn 6.8% every year. So this is a very aggressive pension paydown strategy. It's 15 million more than what's required to be paid. And is quite impressive considering the amount that's been required to be, be paid each year has increased exponentially over the last five to 10 years.
Yeah. So on this one, if I recall correctly, part of our thought process when we were increasing it by the additional 5 million was looking at the, the surplus amount and then making that decision. I imagine that that will be a discussion we have again in May or June, when we have better figures on understanding what our projected surplus, if any, is going to be. Right? Okay. So we're, so it's, in other words, I just want to make sure it's clear. We're not building in 45 as the base assumption. It's, the base assumption is 40 and it potentially higher, depending on how the, how, how the surplus looks.
Exactly.
Okay. All right.
On that, on that 6.5% target assumption for CalPERS and stock market's taking off right now, like what are they projecting for this upcoming?
To be honest, I was surprised. I asked them what their return was through December and they said it was 4%, which I thought would have been much better considering July through December was more than 4%. And so they've shifted away from global equities and have put more into private equity and private debt. Even real estate, which obviously has suffered due to high interest rates. So I think unfortunately their outlook is, it's not as bright as it should be.
And then it's important to remember for CalPERS, that final rate of return is whatever the, the, the return is on June 30th. So a lot could happen between now and then.
Sure, sure. I'm just curious how we were.
Yep.
So now shifting gears and looking at the capital funding outlook. So 23 million in capital funding was reflected in the baseline budget for fiscal year 23, 24. At the time of budget adoption, half of the projected surplus or 5 million was set aside for capital purposes. In addition, once the books were closed for fiscal year 22, 23, half of the prior year surplus or 5.8 million was set aside for capital purposes. So bringing the total set aside for surplus funds to 10.8 million. So given in the inflationary impacts and significant projects on the horizon, it is recommended that the capital funding reflected in general funds proposed budget for fiscal year 24, 25 be increased to address the city's long-term capital needs. Of course, since we don't have the, the budget fully baked yet for fiscal year 24, 25, these are very preliminary estimated amounts that we're tentatively proposing though, a $6.3 million increase in the baseline allocation, which aligns with the discussion that Dave Webb just had. So for example, you know, a million dollar increase into the general fund CIP fund for pavement management. A $2 million increase into the tidelands capital fund for future harbor and beaches master plan projects. A $2 million increase for future FFP projects. And then lastly, a $1.3 million increase in the parks maintenance fund to address the needs outlined in the parks master plan. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant City Manager, Simone Georgis.
Well, and I just, to finish on this point, so this is just the initial beginning, you know, we're still working on reviewing some, from all the departments on program enhancements, if there's any on, on that side of things. We are still dealing with a lot of inflationary pressures as we're building just the base operating budget with contracts and things. So all that has to be rolled in together. So that will be a priority along with this capital funding and then we'll continue to develop this. But we think it is important to really enhance what we have on our capital infrastructure side to really build for the future here. And with that, certainly happy to take a break here to take any questions. We'd like to then move into talking about a couple of the enhancement areas, in particular code enforcement, and then to talk about arts funding as well next.
Okay. So before we do that, um, one of the areas that, that we have an ad hoc looking at right now is in our police department. And we're talking about increased technology use. Um, you know, there are a handful of ideas coming out of there. Does, does any of our? Does any of our budget in this next fiscal year take into account the idea that we may be moving toward a license plate reader program or some kind of technology increase like that?
It's not here right now, because we're working with the ad hoc committee on that, but yet that, the intention is that, yeah, that's another significant component of potential program enhancement, and we're not prepared to talk about it at this meeting since still meeting with the ad hoc committee. But the thought is meet with the ad hoc committee and perhaps have a study session and bring those items forth, and then those would be proposed into the budget.
Okay.
And that, those are, there are costs associated, of course, with that.
Right. Okay, I, that's fair. I was trying to understand if that was within any of the assumptions, but since I know we're not talking about it, and all of that is why we're not talking about it, but I'm, I just wanted to understand what's baked into the assumptions right now.
Right, yeah, and to make it clear, what Jason had talked earlier of the increase, I think he said 6 million, right, that we have right now, that's just baseline. So that's baseline as we're operating now, the salary adjustments of any increases that have already been agreed upon with the bargaining groups, healthcare increases are in there, current contracts that have adjustments to CPI, that's just that baseline that we know of now.
Yeah, and none of that's insignificant. I recognize that. I just, I was trying to, I wanted to make sure I was asking about the assumptions. Before we move into code enforcement, any other questions?
Just going back to slide 35. Grace, can you just help me understand this 2% for salaries and benefits? How did we arrive at that number?
I can speak to that. So in the current year's budget fiscal year 2324, there is an $880,000 allocation for police recruitment. So what it does, it allows the police department to basically overfill, knowing that they're going to have retirements, it takes a long time to fill those positions. That's a one-time allocation of 880,000 that is not going to flow into the budget for fiscal year 2425. So the net increase is 2%. The reality is 3% COLAs baked into the next year's budget. The overall impact is 3%, but then net of that reduction, that one-time allocation in 2324 is why it comes down to 2%. That helps explain things.
So we're not anticipating additional rise in those costs, given all the other factors that we just kind of talked about, inflation and other things? I know we have an existing COLA built in, and those are accounted for, but on top of all that, we're not projecting that those costs are going to go up or that they should?
We only budget what we have actually in our agreements, negotiated agreements, yeah, and known increases, whether, you know, to the healthcare premiums or other, you know, like workers' comp and all that, you know, the premiums we get from that. So known increases are built in. We don't put what ifs into that number.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Assistant City Manager Simone to talk on code enforcement.
Thank you, Grace. Good morning, Mayor O'Neill and City Council members and residents. So we're going to talk about some code enforcement enhancements. With me is John Murray. He's our code enforcement supervisor. He sits right. On the code enforcement side, just kind of looking at what we have existing, we have 4.75 full-time staff members, so definitely four full-time and a three-quarter part-time. It's a budget, it's a budget about $1 million a year, and they take in a revenue of about $200,000 a year. Those are administrative fines. We actually fine more, about almost double that $400,000 a year, but anybody who gets a citation, they have due process rights. Some people don't pay their citations, it goes to collections, so annually we collect about $200,000. That small team is very efficient. They do, they do work seven days a week. As far as the total code cases that they process, they do about 4,400 cases a year. On the right-hand side, you can see about our top 10. Number one is our property maintenance side, and that's about 14%. If you look down to the bottom, eight, number eight, nine, and 10, trash container, short-term lodging, and street vendor, we're going to talk about enhancements focusing on those three at the bottom there. And this is, again, this is from listening from the feedback we got from the council members and from the, from the community. From an enforcement standpoint, 80% of our, the code enforcement team's cases are reactive. In a sense, people call into us to say there is an issue. We get calls, emails, online complaints, and we address zoning violations, signage, property maintenance issues. Only about 20% are actually active proactive enforcement. Water quality, you know, our storm drains drain into the harbor. If we see something where it's polluting our storm drain system, of course, we're going to jump on it. We don't allow gas leaf blowers in certain communities. If we see it, we're going to jump on it right away. We don't wait for somebody to call us. Same thing with unpermitted construction or encroachments in our, in our right of way. Again, 80% is reactive, 20% is going to be on our proactive side.
Simone, quickly.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, for these categories listed 1 through 10, is there any overlap? In other words, if a property is a short-term rental, but it has one of these other violations, is that categorized under that other violation? Or is that, does that fall under?
Return on the officer side to Mr. Murray.
These are done by the code section that was used when the notice or citation was written. So if it's a water quality violation, and that's the code section we use, it would be under that category. If there's, so short-term lodging's under Chapter 5. If we utilize that code section, then it would fall under that category on this slide.
So if someone has trash violations, noise violations, but they're operating a short-term rental, that's going to not show up as a short-term lodging violation?
No, Chapter 5 has those built in for the short-term lodging properties. So if we are at a short-term lodging property for those violations, we would use Chapter 5, so it would show under the short-term lodging on this slide.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, John. From a fine schedule, we've heard some questions about fines. So we have a two-tiered system. We have our Tier 1, which is the trash, construction, and noise, and then our Tier 2. And there, I wrote in that state law is at $100 for the first violation. What I didn't write was that for second violation, it's 200, and under state law, it's 500 for third violation. So when you have a general law city, you have state laws that kind of mandates what those fines are. Charter cities have a little bit more discretion, and so in 2020, in 2021, we actually raised our fines up from that $100 base, which is state law, up to $200. We have that discretion, but state law actually controls how much you can expand those violations. They don't want it to be unreasonable. And so we feel from, from what we've done in 2021, that our Tier 1s are as, you know, we're kind of pushing the envelope, we feel. Tier 2 is a little bit different. We are allowed to go up to that $1,000 for short-term lodging fines or use permits. And so when we get a complaint on short-term lodging and an officer actually goes out there and sees the violation, we're able to issue that immediate citation, which is $1,000. And that's what our program is. We don't really give a warning letter, because if they're violating their short-term lodging ordinance, we automatically issue that citation. Of course, we have the evidence to substantiate that, and the property owner has due process rights. So those are our current fines that are on the books right now.
Do we know how these compare to other cities? I know you said charter cities have more discretion there.
So from, from the other cities, the general law cities, they're, they're following state law, which is 100, 200, and 500. I'm going to ask Mr. Murray if he's aware on the short-term lodging. Yeah, we don't have that information on short-term lodging. So one of the issues that we're facing, that we're seeing--
Simone, sorry, one second. Councilmember Wagon.
I just had, had two questions on the, there's a public works and a community development side of code enforcement. Is this, are you talking about everything, or are you just talking about community development?
Right now, it's just strictly community development.
Okay, gotcha. And then, I know this from experience, because I had a constituent reach out to me on this. The letterhead or the paperwork that you had on the back says $100. It didn't get updated? Just, is it updated now?
So the paperwork has all the values, and so the answer is yes.
Okay, good. So he got a $200 fine on the front from your typing, and then on the back, previously printed, hadn't been updated since 2021, so it said 100. And he's like, why does it say 100 when this says 200?
Good point.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Actually, I had a quick question following up on that. So within John's department, he's got four code enforcement officers below in the org chart. I remember we had loaned and then made permanent code enforcement officer over into the Harbor, Harbor Department. That, that code enforcement officer is not considered part of this code enforcement discussion, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
So one of the areas that we want to focus attention on is beach vending. So we're seeing a significant increase, even post-COVID, on the amount of vendors on our beaches. We don't allow vending on our beach. It's, it's not allowed by our code, it's not allowed by state law, and it's not even permissible under the Coastal Act. And so we've seen a significant increase in that vending on the, on the beaches, and we want, we believe that we need to pay a lot more attention to it. And the challenge that we're facing with vending on the beach is, you know, if those of, you, if I have kids and you go to the beach, you got to carry all the gear on the sand, it's hard walking on that sand. And then you finally find the place where you can park all your, your stuff, and then you're happy because you've landed, because you're not having to walk around on the, on the soft beach. Same thing with our code enforcement staff. We're physically walking on the beach, and it's exhausting to physically walk on the eight miles of sand to deal and address the illegal vending that we see. Additionally, what we're seeing too is that vendors are not carrying proper ID. You ask for their ID, they don't have any. So that's a problem for us, too. We feel that we need, as an enhancement, as something that we need to be much more proactive on, and we want to be ready for the summer season, we need to put some effort into this beach vending program. All right. Our, what we're, we're going to ask the council, what our thoughts are, is that we do have a part-time code enforcement officer that we'd like to convert from a three-quarter time to a full-time member. We do need an ATP, an actual vehicle, to traverse over the sand. We definitely feel that there is more opportunity to take a much more proactive stance on the beach vending, and we want to do that relatively quick, come back to the city council probably in March with an actual program, with actual, looking at the staffing of conversion of part-time to full-time and the vehicle, plus some, any ordinance that we may need to kind of effectuate a proactive program.
I would just say I fully support this. They, they get dropped off in front of my house all the time. The pickup truck shows up, they unload, they've got radios, they got people working the beaches, they know where you guys are at all times. Lifeguards have no skin in the game with this, or they can't, they have no teeth. It's, it was a massive problem. And I would also say the, not as much of a problem, but there's a lot of, during sunset on the beach, you see a lot of people coming out there and setting up shop, big parties and social gatherings, and they're clearly companies that are renting equipment, setting up on the beaches, so I think that would have to go into some of this as well. But I would certainly support this continued effort.
Do you think there's like a sliding scale to this? Like as you start the enforcement, people catch on to that, we're watching, and then they'll kind of close up shop? Or do we feel like this is just something we need to continually do? I get it for the next couple of years, but as, you know, those vendors either start getting sighted and fined, they're not going to come back to Newport. Do we think that, that then we can shift those resources maybe a quarter time on this project and then on, on other projects?
I do. I think our, I think there's some more tools in the tool bags that we could utilize to have a much more proactive enforcement program. And once we implement that strong enforcement, we're going to see a reduction in those number of vendors. We, we feel pretty confident in that approach. We're seeing other cities take this more proactive approach, because it's not just Newport. All the cities are kind of struggling with illegal vending throughout their cities.
Yeah, I, I support this approach, too. We've heard from a number of businesses that they just want people to play by their rules, and when people aren't, and it's, it's costing the livelihoods of small business owners in our community, that's a real problem. So, and in addition to all the other concerns as well, but that's, I, I support this approach. And so you're going to, you say you're going to return to us with proposals in time for the '24 summer season, which starts pretty soon. So I assume that'll be coming in March?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So now we're going to switch to the refuse enforcement, and I think Councilmember Wagon asked about, you know, is it the community development enforcement or the refuse? So now we're going to talk about the refuse enforcement. We have two part-time officers in refuse under Dave Webb's shop, Public Works. So just to recap of what state law currently is, and again, this is under the new state laws, Council Recycle is the enforcement agency for the state, that all cities in California have a diversion rate of organics to 75% by January 2025, and that 100% implementation of the three container systems, or definitely our residential properties have the three container system. And so you look there at the bottom, it's like, where are we at with this process with all these new laws? On the residential side, we're, we're doing really good. We probably could put a little bit more attention on just residential recycling. We're at 65%. We need to kind of boost that up a little higher, but it's not our priority. Our priority is really focusing a lot more attention on the commercial side, where you see commercials are at 28% diversion. We got to get them up to 75% diversion of organics. And then on the implementation, they're at 28% of a three container system, and we got to get them up to that 100%. A lot of work, a lot of resistance to it, and we completely understand, because there's definitely an associated cost with these types of programs, on the businesses, on our commercial property owners. What our proposal is, if we go to the next page, is, you know, we, we need to increase that outreach and education. That, we need to put a lot more attention into that, and ultimately, if that doesn't work, we have to unfortunately utilize the enforcement side of things. We talked about the refuse side has two part-time officers. We want to convert the part-time to full-time, so to full-time, and then move that team over to community development under John Murray's supervision in the code enforcement side inside City Hall. Mr. Murray and his team have the infrastructure, they have the logistics of running a very successful code enforcement operation. They handle 4,400 cases a year. Our goal with the commercial businesses is first outreach and education. That's our primary goal. That's why we need more hours out of the refuse inspectors. But ultimately, if we have to utilize enforcement, because even the city has a deadline. The city already received a notice of violation from CalRecycle, corrective action notice in December 2022, that we're, we're behind the curve. All cities are behind the curve, we need to do our part. So our proposal, increase it to full-time, move that team over to John Murray's shop. We can support them. John Murray's team can support the refuse side until we can get up to that 75% threshold.
This one I've actually been intimately involved with for way too long, so this is one where term limits are making me really excited. But anyway, so, so dealing with this one real quickly, so the, so Cal, so, so there's been a lot of discussion about CalRecycle on this particular program, and there, there's been some reports that show that they're either understaffed or woefully inadequate at actually enforcing a lot of this. And so they're trying really hard to kind of get up to speed on what they should be doing, because a lot of cities are in our same spot of trying to figure out how to, how to deal with regulations that are difficult at best. So on this one, when we're talking about refuse enforcement at two part-time officers to full-time officer, two full-time officers, I, the question I suppose I've, I've got as I'm working this through is, if we were to transfer this over to CDD, and I actually support that, I think that's probably a really good idea for the, certainly on the infrastructure side, and our early efforts are going to be more on the education side rather than why, why go from two full-time or part-time to one full, uh, to, excuse me, why go from two part-time to two full-time over to CDD when we might be able to do two part-time to one full-time, given that the CDD has the, has the infrastructure in place to handle a lot of, a lot of the issues as well? So is there so much work right now in the next fiscal year that would require us to add two full-times as opposed to one full-time and, you know, have that person entire position focused on this?
Certainly. So again, it, it's just, I just want to make clear, Mayor, it's just the conversion from the part-time to a full-time. So it's not adding additional bodies for the refuse side.
Well, I, I know it's not adding additional bodies, but it's adding, when we're, when we're doing our analysis, that always comes to us during the budget season to talk about FTEs. Is, are the part-time people right now 0.5 FTE?
They're, they're 0.75 each.
Got it. So we'd be moving, okay, that probably answers the question then.
0.75 up to a 1.0 for both of them.
And so there's, there's going to be, I guess the, the follow-up question I've got to ask is, if we moved it over into CDD, would there be enough efficiencies that would drop down from needing, you know, 2.75s to a 1.0 instead of a 1.5? Because now you're going from 1.5 to a 2.0, and I'm not sure that there's as much work that would just-- that would justify going up from 1.5 to 2, just given what I've at least seen on the on it, but but convince me I'm wrong.
So, no, you make a very fair point. I think it is, there's a ramp up time. Say we need two years to get the education, the outreach done completely where we can meet that threshold, and then we can see that that drop off because everybody's up to par with on the commercial businesses. So definitely, we need a little bit more resources just to ramp up and do that outreach and education.
Yeah. If we were going to do this, I would probably want, I mean, this is, this is a question for Grace now. So if we were going to do this where we were increasing two people from part time to two people in full time and moving over to CDD, I would expect that not 100% of their time would be spent on refuse. Because I, like I said, I I think I have a pretty good grasp of what that is, what that requires, and I don't really see two full time employees doing nothing but education efforts with our refuse companies. So if they, if we were going to do that, I would hope that they would also be doing other code enforcement activities as well, working for John.
Yeah, I think that's where we would like to go. I do know in talking, and probably Dave Webb could talk a little bit further, I think at least initially, because these numbers are so low and the amount of just time, you know, intensiveness in working with specific haulers, I think, at least for a couple of years, I want to say, like a two year period of time, they are pretty full time with two. But I, that's why I think with the combination together into the code enforcement staff after that, I I think we can reallocate the resources. But I I think at this beginning point, in terms of ramping up that compliance piece is pretty key right now.
Okay. Councilmember Wagon.
Some of what the mayor had discussed was what I wanted to ask about, but I also just want to know generally, like, our scorecard here. So we're talking about 100% implementation, so 100% of our residents have the three can system, is that basically what we're saying here?
Correct.
And the 75% diversion is actually the metric that somehow we get reported back from CR, from the the trash companies, that it's 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 efficient to 75% under state law requirements, and we're at 91% on organic and 65% on residential, just regular recycling.
Correct.
So that's a pretty good scorecard, actually, given that we really just got to 100% so recently. So I feel like the education or whatever outreach we've been doing has been pretty efficient. So I understand needing more, and obviously, on this commercial side, we're really behind the times. But it does seem like we're doing a really good job at getting to, you know, at least the state law requirements and not exceeding.
It's correct. We do an excellent job of the recycling. I think the attention's really going to be on that commercial side.
How often do we get that reporting back? Is it, is it pretty regular and?
So those are numbers we do. We do monthly reporting to the state, and we're compiling it all the time. So again, we spend a lot of time, as the mayor said, in a working group to really work on the residential, but the commercial is where we need to pick it up.
And I feel like also, much with other efforts that we have in the city regarding education on other initiatives that we've dealt with, at least in the last year, a lot of this, of course, we need professionals from city staff, but some of this might be able to be filtered to other information entities in our city. For example, Neighborhood Watch, I know that's focused on crime, but there, you know, there's certain element of education that goes out within other, you know, ways than just our staff. And so maybe, you know, we have other campaigns like Good Giving, you know, there's different campaigns that we do that maybe could absorb some of the, you know, the heavy lift on that.
Good point.
Real quick, before we go to Councilmember Wagon, that that brings up a really good point. It's probably worth noting, just to to throw this out there. So one of the things that when we're going through, so all of the commercial side, the education effort on that is really more of a reminding haulers that their franchise agreements can be pulled if they don't bring up their compliance. And so it's, there's a lot of education on that. Sometimes they'll blame their customers, but unfortunately, that's on them, that's part of their franchise agreement. So I highlight this because one thing that's a little bit unique about Newport, we actually tend to have folks who own some of the haulers living in the city, so you may run into them from time to time at the grocery store. I have. And so I just point this out because there is almost certainly going to be a push at some point soon to extend out some of the franchise agreements. I would just point out while we're having, you know, when those discussions come up, and they may even come up at some point, and since this is a planning session, I'll just mention it, maybe remind them that 28% is not exactly a great compliance level for us to want to extend out the franchise agreements. So there's a, there's going to be a give and take as we're working through this. Obviously, we need commercial franchise agreements, franchise haulers, but we also need them to not put us in the crosshairs of groups like Cal Recycle. So it's, it's going to be give and take, certainly, but that's the, that's something that will certainly come up. I was going to go to Councilmember Wagon, but I'll come, okay.
I just have one more thing on the same thing, sorry. I know this is a topic that's come up in the past, but we do have a different system for residential versus commercial. And in the residential, we have almost universally one provider, but in the commercial, we have a number of providers. And I know that that's been a conversation over the years and what, how that affects our community, and it seems like that may be a bigger conversation that we would need to have about when we're talking about, you know, this number being really low and what we're going to do moving forward. I know it's very politically oriented, but there's other issues, not just the low diversion rates and implementation rates, but there's other issues of the amount of trucks that are going through our city and the distractions that it causes to our residents and businesses and that kind of thing. So I don't know if we're considering that, but it certainly would be something I think we should look at in the future, again.
Yeah, I think the mayor and Councilmember Grant kind of bring up some points there, and I appreciate that discussion that the mayor had about the amount of education. I mean, the 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 commercial, these, a lot of these guys are small businesses, so I can think of, you know, Babo Island, the peninsula, there's Thai Quarter there, there's space limitations when it comes to, you know, that type of recycling and type of organics. And yes, they're, these are restaurants a lot of times, and, you know, it's kind of constituent based as well. I I reached out to Simone about a constituent that owns a business down on the peninsula having issues with their getting a lot of fines because of their trash in that area. So, you know, when we talk about this, and as far as enforcement, we've got a lot of local businesses. I see one just down to the left of me, you know, there's a lot of local guys that have, their bottom line is cut, you know, inflation's high, all of these operating costs are high, and then we're going to add a whole different layer of potential fines and violations and things. So education, to me, is very important. And then when we are dealing with these individual haulers, and when it comes to commercial, you know, they've got Ware Despoles or Republic, they've got CRNR, they've got all these options. So, you know, working, as the mayor said, on the franchise agreements, I think are important to get it into their head that that we have to bring those numbers up. But when we're talking about fines and violations, you know, we're talking about hitting the bottom line of these local businesses. So just be cognizant of that when we're out writing these code enforcements. And I get it, we want to be as high as we can on this, but these are pretty severe requirements coming from the state, and we want to adhere to those, but we also have to be recognizing that 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 businesses are going to be hurt if we're attacking them with these violations.
Yeah, and that's, that's fair. Most of what we're, most of what we're talking about in large part are the tier one haulers, the very big ones. The tier twos certainly have requirements on them as well, but the ones that we really need a lot more compliance from are the tier ones, like the CRNRs and whatnot. So, yeah, so I just, that's fair. I just wanted to make sure on this one, the largest compliance effort needs to be on the ones that have the most contracts on the, on the tier one side, but that's fair.
Just real quickly from the, from the commercial side, and I really like the idea of bringing this into CDD, just because I think it goes directly with building code at one point, and those types of things are going to start crossing over. Because a lot of our issue, and why I would like to blame the haulers, I don't necessarily think it's necessarily on them. I think it is a lot with, we built things to standards previously to allow for certain types of dumpsters and refuse collection, and now walking into a new system, you're physically limited sometimes by space within that compliance piece, and there's a lot of the systems that are in place. So we really appreciate the education. I think that's huge. And then, you know, I think working with the haulers on maybe changing some of their equipment and their systems to make it a little easier, more efficient, and even pickup times with different trucks is really helpful. The organics have been tough across the board for, well, for restaurants, actually, just because leaving a bunch of food sitting in an open container or even a closed container for any amount of time is typically not something we're used to or even want to do. And even plastic bags keep us without that limit, or within that diversion piece. So I really appreciate the effort, and I I do think when we're building new ones, we're constantly looking at how to better facilitate both our infrastructure pieces and our receptacles. So, thanks.
Next, we want to talk about commercial businesses and residential neighborhoods. We talked earlier about the level of short term lodging that we have. So we have 1,550 short term lodging permits issued in our residential zones. We are in that process where it's going to, some, about 75 will transfer it over to our mixed use. Right now, currently, the, that short term lodging is a reactive program. We get a complaint, we respond, we don't do any proactive activity in that. We don't look at the noise or parking. Again, it's strictly reactive. We additionally have other types of business in residential neighborhoods. We talked about residential care facilities. We have the ones that are permitted by the state, those are legal, and we have illegal residential care facilities. We don't have a lot, but every once in a while, we do have one that pops up, one that operates without even a permit by the state. So what our proposal is, is, and this is where we'd like to get some feedback from the council, is to turn this into more of a proactive program, where we're doing ongoing patrols for short term lodging during our peak season, in a sense that we're actually driving through the residential neighborhoods, making sure everybody is in compliance, again, during our summer season, more on the heavy season. Additionally, we want to go in and review these units on a annual, bi-annual basis. So every other year, check on property maintenance issues, make sure that they're utilizing the garage for parking and not for storage. And in our code already, we do have some interior noticing requirements, and make sure that any residential care facilities that are operational, they do have the proper licensing and permitting, and they're not operating outside what, even even getting their permit from the state. Thoroughly scrub and check the websites with regards to all those types of businesses that I've just mentioned. So to implement this proactive program, we are at, we will like to ask the council to add an additional one time, full time code enforcement officer. And again, their primary duty would be to focus on these, this proactivity. Additionally, we would utilize a temporary employee during the peak summer season to answer a hotline that, those are calls that come into our hotline, so we have somebody on staff to answer them directly, to talk to our residents, instead of utilizing this kind of outside answering service that we do on the kind of the slow season. Any questions before I go to the cast?
You know, I do, Simone. First of all, I just want to say thank you for being responsive to the last discussion that we had on this, and all of this analysis is really helpful. I wanted to ask about if if we have a sense, we have data that we look at, or maybe just anecdotally, you know what the intensity of calls is. In other words, do we have typical patterns? Are we seeing more calls coming in on, you know, Friday, Saturday nights? And obviously, the reason I'm asking is because I want to make sure we allocate resources accordingly. Wouldn't make sense to have somebody working, you know, Monday through Friday during the day if the majority of these calls are coming in the evening. And then I know that code enforcement has to actually witness the violation in order to act on it. So that's another part of, you know, it's great to have someone receive those calls, but if there isn't somebody to actually go out and respond to it, I'm not sure that that gets us there and just further frustrates the process and the residents.
Certainly, so I definitely happy to answer that. So we do stagger our scheduling to make sure that we're staffed on the peak days and times. I'm going to let Mr. Murray kind of, just want to do a little recap.
So we currently have the employee, she works, excuse me, Thursday through Sunday nights until midnight. We've kind of played with it. We used to have them here till 3:00 AM. There just wasn't the call volume at that time. We thought maybe with the bars closing at 2, we would have people returning to these units and creating noise disturbances, but that wasn't the case. So midnight is where the calls really start to fall off. So we we're already staffed up for that on the weekends and nights, and we're, we're ready to, currently, we're responding to calls, but if this is approved and goes through, then she would actively be out looking for the parties and parking violations proactively.
So then would she split her time to being responsive to all calls? Or would she be focused solely on the proactive patrol, if you will, for these violations?
When there's other staff members, she would be focused solely on this. As you get into the later hours, she would have a cell phone on her that answers the main line if there was an urgent call, like a prohibited discharge, she she would respond to that. Otherwise, she would take the message and relay it to staff for the following day if it, if it wasn't an immediate need to respond to.
And then for more of the ministerial side of this, would we use existing staff to do the proactive, for example, you referenced here, doing internet searches for advertising units that are not permitted and things like that, and also looking at calls for service, things that we might be missing? You know, that seems like that would take a substantial amount of time. We have a lot of these rentals, and also one thing we didn't talk about was, under this umbrella, is the grandfathered infractional units that I know residents say have similar types of concerns?
So we do have a computer program that we utilize that scans for unpermitted rentals. This position would be the the person that would go through those. That would be in the downtime, but prior, you know, when she starts her shift, before the the night hours hit, she would come in, she comes in at 1:30, so there's some time there to do it. We do know where all the fractional units are. I've had myself personally a couple of cases at them, but the call volume for those units are much lower than the short term rentals at this time.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah. So if we're having more code enforcement out there for proactive programs on these, I think this is great, and I I kind of echo a lot of the comments that Councilmember Climen brought up. But when you have on slide 41, you know, the 80% is the reactive enforcement, I just don't want to see the proactive program kind of turn into adding on to the, you know, the 80, 80%. I'd like it to be finite and focused on these items that you're bringing up. I I don't want to see that kind of shift to more proactive on everything. And so that, that would just concern me because I I think I appreciate the reactive approach, and if we kind of start shifting away from that, I think we're going to see, especially on this council dais, a lot more constituent reach out, and, you know, that just becomes problematic at a while. You know, and then I see this heavy focus on short term lodging, but, you know, just, I want to make sure that recovery residences are are really added to this, you know, as well, because as Councilmember Climen mentioned, you advertise and checking websites, you know, looking at that, we've worked with our city attorney's office, and we've been able to shut down a few of these misleading information. So, you know, that can kind of parlay all into that. But yeah, on recovery residences, as they continue to have an impact, and who knows what happens with Proposition One passing? If that does pass, let's hope not. But if that passes, there's going to be some additional potential for more of these in our neighborhoods. And to me, that is a commercial business in a residential neighborhood, so we just have to be mindful of that.
Understood, yes, thank you for for those comments. I mean, majority is the reactive program, we just don't have the staff to even try to tackle this on a proactive basis. Hence, we're just going to focus on those slides that we just talked about for just for our proactivity.
Great, that, that's helpful.
Just quickly, I want to just respond to that. So just to clarify, I was referring to advertising for, you know, Airbnb and those types of facilities. I was not suggesting what Councilmember Wagon thought I was, apparently. But but yes, I think the intent for this, when we talked about it last, was to confine the proactive enforcement to this commercial operation in residential neighborhoods umbrella. And certainly, I don't think that, speaking for myself, but certainly, I would imagine on this council, there is, isn't the desire to become a proactive enforcement, Big Brother type of a, of a agency, so.
In suit with that, Councilmember Climen and the councilmembers, is just from the proactive on the short term lodging, is there consensus for that, for us to move forward that? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and and my apologies, I wasn't, I wasn't adding that, I was adding that, I wasn't saying that what you were bringing up as far as internet searching for short term rentals, I think that's a great approach, too. So no, when you said it, I should have clarified that in my head, it brought up some of the items related to recovery residences and their advertisements. But yes, I But yes, I, I think that's important, that we do scour the web when it comes to these illegal short-term rentals. So I appreciate that.
And I just, I would just say that we're adding these 75 units in the commercial mixed-use districts that we're talking about, taking some of these in the residential areas and I think perfectly putting them, placing them in an area where they're more fitting. I mean, I walk the beach almost every night and I can count 25 derelict homes that are short-term rentals right now from my house towards the, towards the pier. So I love the fee recovery. I think some of these newer units that are coming online through these mixed use are going to help offset hopefully some of these costs. So yeah, I'm supportive for sure.
And so next, we want to just kind of talk about those costs and go them, through them very quickly. So the first one, would we talk to vendor enforcement, converting that part-time, which is a .75, to a full-time? So that's just an increase of a quarter of a full-time and you could see the total cost along with the all-trained vehicle of $71,000. Next, we talked about the refuse enforcement.
Simone, more.
Yeah, sorry.
On that ATV, this is just one of those lawyer things. Make sure they're super well-trained.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's a, that's a discussion to be had with our lifeguards.
Interesting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does council get used to those on week in?
All the time.
Nope. Nope. Go ahead.
Next, we want to talk about our refuse enforcement. We did talk about converting the part-time of .75 to a full-time. And so that equivalency is a half-time FTE and that's about a $71,000 cost, ongoing cost. Next, we want to talk about the short-term lodging. Again, we've talked about adding an additional full-time code enforcement officer and it's not just short-term lodging, it is definitely looking at all those commercial businesses in the residential zone. $100,000 for that full-time position, that's an ongoing basis. We talked about the temporary employee for $7,200. We do have some configuration internally at City Hall and that's just a one-time cost. And then you look at, from a cost recovery standpoint, and this is where our, my, the finance director, Jason, was able to do some math for us and help us here. So we can offload that short-term lodging enforcement and some of that administrative stuff that we do at City Hall with those permit renewals and tracking short-term lodging. So if you see there on the screen, on the first one there, we could increase our initial permit fee from $175 to $392 and that's just an offset of the cost. Again, this is a fee, this is not a tax, this is just the, the time and resources the city puts into operate short-term lodging program. So we have, we can definitely propose an increase on the initial permit fee and then a increase on the renewal fee. And I just want to be very clear that this increases those fees to those operators. And I'll show you a comparison here in just a second. Additionally, looking at other funding sources on item two there, definitely need to dip into the general fund by a little bit, about $100,000, but we can, can utilize our environmentally, environmental liability funds for the refuse portions and then we'll generate additional fees from increasing our initial permit fee and renewal fees. And also, we have some reserves of our ISF that we can utilize to pay for all this. Now, going back to that item one, if you look at our initial permit fee, raising that to $392 and comparing it to what other cities we're seeing. So right now, we're at $175 for the permit, initial permit fee, raising that to close to $400. We're still in that lower tier. It probably exceeds San Clemente, but you can see that we're still relatively below the other cities. And comparing it to the renewal fee, if we said $319, I believe that's what it was, we're still in that lower tier or probably in the mid-tier on the renewal fee. And so we could definitely cover those costs with those permits.
So I'll just say, I'm certainly supportive of, of these fees changing to be more consistent with kind of the market rate, if you will, and also kind of raising the bar a little bit, I think, across the board on these types of commercial operations in residential zones. What we're looking for is not to preclude or eliminate, but we're trying to encourage better operators and hold everybody kind of accountable. So again, I'm supportive and I don't think that these are huge departures, they're not, you know, prohibitive numbers. Also, I'm just curious in terms of funding, I mean, we have TOT as well, specifically the TOT we collect for the short-term lodging and then, and then there's a greater conversation maybe to be had about TOT beyond that, but isn't that another source for offsetting, if you will?
Well, TOT is a general revenue that goes into our general fund. So it, it's certainly a portion of what, you know, funds a lot of things in our general fund. So it's not a restricted fund use for us there. But certainly if, to the fact that a lot of the, the, the short-term lodging, you know, they do pay the TOT. So there is a correlation there with that, but, but we don't have it restricted specifically.
Yeah, understood. I'm just saying.
Yeah, that's right.
These are people that are coming here to use these facilities or, you know, residences and there's a toll that, you know, that takes on the city. So I would think that makes sense, but just to say it's more of an offset. And then I'll just reiterate, if you, if you are going to come back at some point, that I would take another look at how we are comparing on the penalty side to other cities. I don't know if we're...
Yeah, we, we can do a survey on the fines with other cities.
Because that might be another source of revenue to offset. Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, real quick, as long as we're doing a Prop 187 analysis to make sure that the fee is in line and it makes sense, then certainly I'd like to take a look at it as well. Councilmember Graham.
And on that same note, it's, it is pretty astounding to look at the comparison to other cities in our region and note that we are definitely, you know, on the lower, if not the lowest. And adjusting those rates to be more commensurate with other cities is a good idea, but as with any adjustments to fees, I think we need to take a look at how we're going to do that. You know, doubling or tripling our fees overnight is always of concern to whoever it is that is paying those fees. So I would understand that maybe we would look at some kind of phasing or something like that. If it's legitimate to do that as opposed to just, you know, ad hoc, just kind of going and doubling or tripling fees for certain entities. On the, on the enforcement side, I think that we can look at that a little differently and as the mayor suggested, you know, we want to make sure that it's lawful, but, you know, I see enforcement is a little bit different. If we've been sort of lax in charging these fees, we want to make sure that we're considerate in how we, you know, approach raising them.
And the, the fee schedule comes back, it goes through the finance committee and then to the city council for adoption. So we'll have time to have input and if there's ways, you know, if there's a phasing or, or any other desire on how to implement that, we would go through that at that point.
Councilmember Wagen needed to use the restroom, but he said he was supportive of, of this approach. I am too. So before we keep going to the arts, generally speaking, I don't need to show hands, but generally speaking, are we basically supportive of the staff on this one? Yeah, okay. Great.
Mayor, before we move on, I just want to kind of use this conversation, piggyback on this, if you will, to talk a little bit more about quality of life issues and just see if there's any other council colleagues up here who might want to entertain the discussion of adding more police presence to address some of those quality of life issues that we know residents complain about. We have an amazing HLO team, we have an incredible Peninsula Enforcement team. I for one would like to see those programs expanded. I know the HLO team and PET team are here only part of the week and then obviously Peninsula Enforcement Team is focused there. I would really like to see those expanded to Crenna del Mar, to Newport Center and, you know, potentially cover more days of the week. And again, I don't know if there's any support up here for that longer conversation.
Yeah, I definitely support that.
I want to hear from our police chief that it would be warranted, but I mean, that's certainly part of a budget discussion. So if the police chief wanted to come up and, maybe not right now, because that's a much longer conversation, but that would be something that I'd, I'd, I'd be interested in seeing maybe during a study session.
I would agree.
All right, we'll move into a discussion on cultural arts funding and programming then.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. Melissa Hartson, your library services director. And to the right of me, I have Rebecca Lightfoot, the library services manager. Today, we'll be talking about the cultural arts division for this, the city. Staff work alongside the arts commission to plan and host arts programs for the, for the community. Today, I'll take you through what our current programming levels are, how they're funded, and then put before you some feedback that we've received from the arts commission to expand arts programming throughout the city. We're looking for council's direction and feedback on those expanding program opportunities. Current programs involve a number of different elements throughout the city. First off, we start off with our central library lobby gallery exhibits. This is rotational exhibit featured within the central library and features new artists' work every two to three months. Concerts on the Green is a big summertime event and we get a, a number of people to fill up that green throughout the summer months and then we wrap up our concert series with a fall concert at, at Marina Park. The cultural arts grants allow the opportunity for outside organizations to offer arts programming throughout the community. Recently, grants have focused in on arts education programs for our local schools and community programs for family performances and events. The Newport Beach Art Exhibition returned this past year after a three-year hiatus and it was a successful return, a full day to celebrate the arts with hundreds of people coming to see this juried art show. We featured nearly 250 pieces, 150 artists at this celebration of Arts Day. Tying in with the art exhibition this past year, we unveiled Phase Eight of the sculpture exhibition in Civic Center Park. We have had a successful installation of eight phases and we currently have Phases Seven and Eight and looking to install Phase Nine this upcoming June. The student art exhibition, we're on our third year, call for entries is currently open. After our first year of about almost 90 entries, we doubled that last year with over 180 and we're looking to continue to involve the students in, in the arts programming throughout, throughout the city. Funding for this division comes mainly from the city's general fund. The general fund budgets are divided up into the programming, professional services, city grants, sculpture exhibition, and staffing. The actuals and below for the fiscal year 2023, 24, that should be adopted, not necessarily projected. Those include the staffing element. General fund for programming and services is about $250,000. We also receive community source funds from the Newport Beach Arts Foundation. In the past couple of years, they have given support to support the artist honorariums for the sculpture exhibition and the Newport Beach Art Exhibition. You'll see where we are at to date. They have funded $10,000 to support the sculpture, sculpture exhibition with a follow-up that the arts commission may go back to the foundation for additional help later this fiscal year. Now, where, where are we with all of this? You'll see in these two charts, the breakdown of how these funds are allocated and spent. You will see that the total expenditures does exceed the general fund that we are given, but we do offset that with the Newport Beach Arts Foundation funding and then the artist entry fees from the Newport Beach Art Exhibition. Taking all this into account, the arts commission does want to expand programming and they formed an ad hoc subcommittee to determine this upcoming fiscal year 24, 25 program enhancement requests. They are asking to expand cultural arts grants by $10,000, bringing it to $40,000 to provide additional programming through other organizations to the community. Going to $40,000 would bring the cultural arts grants back to the 2019, 2020, $40,000 level that we were previously at in the upcoming weeks. You will be receiving this year's cultural arts grants for approval and we did have asks of $35,000 this, this year. The other ask for program enhancement request would be to fully fund the sculpture exhibition. General fund allocation is $135,000 and the total cost of the exhibition, sculpture exhibition is approximately $170,000. So commission is looking to fully fund that to then potentially expand programming into other, other areas. With that, the arts commission held a study session to discuss potential programs to expand in, in the city. Here, we have a list of where that additional $37,000 would go to. The first off would be promoting the sculpture exhibition, developing an educational program for students that would tie in with tours to the sculpture exhibition, class, having class field trips. Another opportunity is bringing back the photo contest for the, for the sculptures in Civic Center Park. Those were last held in 2018 and 2021 and the current phases have not been photographed. Other opportunities would be additional live performances for programming, potential for outdoor acoustic music series or bringing back the festival ballet, again, focusing on family programming. Something that was in the works starting in 2020, 2021 was a plain air art event to take place in Civic Center Park. The last one covers a number of different things and that's art in public spaces. One, utility box art has been discussed to bring art into the different villages throughout the community. The expansion of the sculpture exhibition, looking at other locations to bring sculptures throughout the community. And then this one, while not necessarily discussed at their study session, it has been a topic of conversation on a continuo base, continuous basis, is the acquisition of sculptures for the city art inventory. We do currently have a number of pieces that the city has within its art inventory that do require routine maintenance, regular maintenance. And artists have approached the city arts commission to have the city purchase or even they want to donate their work. And with that comes additional costs of the continual maintenance, particularly in this beach city, there are environmental elements to certainly consider where maintenance costs are higher than what normally would, would be thought of. This is a piece, again, didn't necessarily come straight out of the study session of the arts commission, but is so much so that the arts commission has formed an ad hoc subcommittee to look at council policy. I-11 acquisition of art within the city to amend that policy to cover routine maintenance and the art within the, within the city. With that, I look for council's direction and feedback.
I'll start, I'll start. So one thing that I want to mention at the outset here is that I think that it's very important that we understand that the biggest part of this budget, if you look at it, is for the sculpture exhibition, $171,000 or $172,000. I think it's really important for us to understand that that's sort of a pass-through, that is not part of really the arts commission's budget. It's the money that's necessary for us to continue the sculpture collection at the Civic Center. And I think as a body here, we need to acknowledge that we're going to do that at the level that we're doing it or that we want to somehow restrict that, whether it be less sculptures, less often that they would be installed or replaced or something. I think we all remember that last cycle, we sort of hit a brick wall with that where we thought that maybe there wasn't enough money left in the budgeted money to accommodate the 10 sculptures that needed to be replaced. And so I think it's really important to see that... And so I think it's really important to see that that is just really a pass-through amount. It's not money that's discretionary to be spent by the Arts Commission, but money that's essential to continue that program. I no longer even see, even though that I worked on that project when it started, I don't see it as really an Arts Commission project anymore. It is a city operation at this point. We have a regular rotating sculpture collection that we fund. And so I think universally, we have to decide that we want to continue doing that, because that's a big portion of this 200, you know, whatever amount we're going to go to, whether in enhancement or not. But several hundred thousand dollars, almost 200,000 of it, is really just a pass-through. So maybe somebody else wants to comment on the viability of that program going forward, and that we acknowledge that, because it's a big part of this budget.
I would be very happy to do that. So if it's no longer a city, if you view it as a pass-through and it's really a city council responsibility, then I would 100% welcome the opportunity for the city council to have sole discretion on what it looks like in terms of the number of phases we go through, because I don't think there's any reason for us to do this every year. $172,000, I mean, we just, this is a, this actually, I'm glad it's coming up during this discussion, because when we're talking about the enhancements, when we're talking about the needs for additional police, when we're talking about the needs for additional code enforcement, this is one of those times where it's a great opportunity for us to look at all the city's budget holistically. And there is no reason for us to be spending $172,000 every year on changing out sculptures in the Sculpture Garden. 100%, we should be doing this every, at least every two years. It'll cut it in half, and we would have the opportunity to still have 30 sculptures in the Sculpture Garden, but also maintain a budget that puts the emphasis on where our residents clearly would prefer it, which is the citywide efforts such as code enforcement, police efforts, et cetera. And I just don't see the, I don't, I have not received the feedback from folks out in our community that they are demanding more cultural arts in our city. We know this, because every time we've had this conversation, the, at least at the city council level, the discussion has been, "Look, show us the need, show us the desire, show us the want." And a lot of that has come from, and I've heard this for eight years now, the Arts Foundation is revamping its goal, changing its leadership, focused more on fundraising. We'll show you that people out in the community want to do this. So when we're talking about cultural arts, it's not exactly like we're skimping on this. When we're talking about $350,000, we're talking about a lecture hall that just is now going in, that's $24 million plus whatever the change orders end up being. This is a, obviously, this council is spending an extraordinary amount on cultural arts. So when we're talking about trying to come back on this, for example, when we're talking about grant funding, cultural arts grant funding, that's something that the private sector should be doing far more than the public sector should be doing in our city. When we're talking about the Sculpture Garden, if that's a pass-through, then by all means, let's take it back at the council level and figure this out ourselves on a financial level. And if we're going to do that, absolutely, we should be doing it every two years, maybe every three, but not every year at $172,000 a year. So this is, this is something that's been coming up for a long, long time. So if we're going to reduce the expenditures, or at least we're going to be talking about it, fantastic. The reason I don't think it's a pass-through, though, is because every time this has come up, the Arts Commission has told us, "Absolutely not, you can't do that. It would ruin the character of the community." And this has been a discussion, I know, because I've read the minutes, that's happened at the Arts Commission, where you, I know of at least one council, or one commissioner who had said, "Hey, look, let's do this," and the response was, "No, it would ruin the Sculpture Garden approach." So I know that this is not a unanimous recommendation coming from the Arts Commission. And so it strikes me that if we're going to be having the discussion, I mean, we just talked about millions and millions of dollars of enhancements from the, from just the capital improvement side, but let alone the additional staff time. This is not the priority, those are the priorities. So when we're having the discussion about increasing it by $37,000, my answer is no. And the, and then if we wanted to talk about real, really, but if we really wanted to talk about increasing it, then we should be finding ways to decrease the largest expenditure, which is absolutely the Sculpture Garden. So absolutely, I would, I would, I'd welcome the opportunity for us to finally have that decision up here. It's just never been our decision. So if it's going to be, that's where I'm heading. My suspicion is they would prefer that not be our decision, which is why it's part of their budget. And so I don't view it as a pass-through.
So that's entirely legitimate, and I think that this is an important conversation to have, and maybe we don't have enough time here necessarily to have it. We can talk about it as long as we want and get feedback from other council members. When I say it's a pass-through, I mean that this is the, I don't mean that there's not discretion in the types of sculpture that's there, anything like that, but this is the minimum amount of money that's necessary to replace the sculptures. It's not like there's, you know, there's a very established set schedule of required monies that are due in order to take out the sculpture and put in new sculptures. So it's, when I say it's a pass-through, there's just no discretion in the amount of the money that's spent on doing this. That's the program we have in place. We decided to have that program many, many years ago, and I think it's very legitimate, and I appreciate your concerns about how much we're expending, and maybe there are better ways for us to accomplish the sculpture collection without spending $175,000 a year. I'm just saying that when you look at this budget, the large majority of it is not going to anything that's discretionary. It's going to something that we absolutely have made a commitment to, and we need to reevaluate that commitment. I agree with you that the grants, while we do have a policy for the grants that I think is still a mandatory sort of policy, that the council shall grant a certain amount of money towards grants, I think that there is room for the private sector to take over on some of that, and some of that money that we spend giving out to other organizations could perhaps be brought in-house to accomplish some of the goals and the programming that we want to have, i.e. very, very popular concerts where we get 1,000-plus people out on the civic green at every single concert, or art shows where we get thousands of people that come through our city. And that absolutely does create revenue for the city in bringing people in and that kind of thing. So maybe we do need to have a relook at that. These other programs that we're talking about, these have to be vetted better. You know, things like utility box art or expansion of art to the other parts of the city. I think that those are laudable goals if we want to have those kind of programs, but they have to be vetted further before we would add budget for those, just broadly, in my mind. I do see as a priority the sculpture collection at Civic Center Hall, because we've made a commitment to that, adjusting it and maybe refining it so it doesn't cost as much. Now, if we don't do it every year, if we do it every two years, or every three years, or we do eight sculptures instead of 10, we still have associated costs, because we have to pay the artists for a lengthier term, but there would be savings. And so I am in agreement with the mayor that we relook at this. I just want to acknowledge that the biggest part of this budget, which does look very large, is something that we have a commitment towards, that we have to adjust if we're going to, you know, not fund it. The final thing I'll say is, it has been a commitment by our community to the arts, and we saw it in the outpouring of support for the Civic Hall that we are going to construct. I don't think that there's been that same outpouring for generalized arts foundation funding. The Arts Foundation has consistently probably been available to give us about $10,000 to $20,000 a year over the last 10 to 20 years, probably. So I don't think that as a body, we should be relying on the Arts Foundation to supplement our necessary programming, i.e. the sculpture collection and the really popular cultural opportunities like the concerts. So that's it.
Got it, I appreciate it. I would be remiss not to point out that there was a lot of opposition to the lecture hall, too. Anyway, anyone else? Yep, go ahead.
I have some comments on this, on just one question for Melissa. The professional services going down, it was 14, and then it goes to 11, is that?
Yes, so that is a piece that does fluctuate depending on the need of maintenance required. This year, to fund the Sculpture Garden, we did have to move funding from professional services. So there are some delayed maintenance that will be moved into the next fiscal year to give more restorative cleanings to the pieces throughout the community. We keep up on the routine cleanings, but again, in this environment, you need to have new finishes and a more thorough maintenance to the pieces that we own in the art inventory.
Do you think that this idea of maybe extending out the duration of this would be beneficial to help us with this difference? And thoughts up here, maybe, when it comes to the length of an exhibit? So, you know, you take half one year, and then they replace that half, and then the next year, the second half gets replaced, and that's kind of the process that it's been so far. Do you think extending that out maybe a year would be beneficial? I see it when we come to City Hall, and I'm a supporter of the Sculpture Garden. I see people out there all the time checking them out. I've heard some say, "Oh, I really like that piece, I wish it could stay longer." You know, is there kind of a thought amongst your side of the world when it comes to that? Are we moving them out too quickly, and they could stay longer? And it's probably also based on the artist, how long they want it to stay in the park, too, right?
Yes, I could see certainly an opportunity to look at lengthening the time that sculptures are there so that we are not doing installation and deinstallation every year. There would certainly be some cost savings. Of course, artist honorariums would fluctuate then, because we would be lengthening the time that they would be exhibiting here in the city. The other thing to consider is, again, lengthening the time, the materials for the sculptures would have to withstand the beach elements here for a longer period of time. Do I think that would save some monies? Yes, absolutely, because we are spending $172,000 every year and do not have to, a large portion of that goes to the installation and deinstallation project management of each phase.
Yeah, I think considering that maybe a hybrid approach, I don't know if three years is maybe too much, but there are some of them that are popular. But when you sell the program to these artists, you know, if we had a longer duration on there, then those that are worried or wanting them back quicker wouldn't apply, because it would be in the rules that would say, "Hey, it's going to be here now for two years instead of one year," versus, you know, at least they have that mindset going into the program. But I mean, if you want to extend it longer, you would give them that heads-up.
Correct, that would be part of the guidelines.
Got it, okay. And a couple of other things on here that I saw. Utility box, I am adamantly against that. I don't need to draw attention to utility boxes in the city. So, I mean, Costa Mesa might like it, maybe they're the city of the arts, so they do things a little differently, but I have no interest in that. And then I do think we need to work with the private side, with, you know, the public, and getting more awareness to what this does for the community. There's a ton of art lovers in this city, and I guarantee you, if you open that information up, there would be more private donations to help cover this. So I think we could look at more hybrid approach, you know, public-private partnership when it comes to the Sculpture Garden. There's people out there that, if they knew it was going to go away, I think they would start donating to it. So I think, you know, I'm sure the foundation's doing a great job, but, you know, we need to get a little bit more awareness onto that. And I think there's a lot more money out there to kind of help offset those costs.
Well, Grace?
Yes.
You, yeah, you get to make a recommendation to us at some point through the budget process, but you've heard some different opinions, so.
Right, and so would it be helpful to come back with some options on the sculpture exhibition program?
I think we probably need to ask our Arts Commission to take a hard look.
Given this, yeah, discussion.
I think that would be helpful for us. And it's not that they have to make a recommendation on which their preferred option is. I think it would just be helpful for them to have, to come to us with options and say, "Look, this is how the council could address this issue."
Okay.
Yeah, of course.
So one thing that has come up from the Arts Commission periodically over the last number of years, and I'm not exactly sure how we would handle that here, but maybe it's something that you can add to the conversation when you go back to the Arts Commission, is the idea of offering opportunities. Eric kind of briefly mentioned it, offering opportunities for the public to participate in the sculpture collection. We originally avoided that concept. There are, there is no naming, there's no plaques, there's nothing up in the, and I'm not necessarily advocating for it, I'm just saying, you know, you brought it to mind, and it has been something that's been on the minds of the Arts Commission and the Arts Foundation for a long time. So maybe, you know, covering that when you do your review of, you know, of a proposal, the idea that, I'm not talking about naming the entire collection or anything like that, but there is a certain element of our community that does like to participate in some sort of recognition, you know, and that might be an avenue for additional resources. Again, I'm not necessarily in favor of it, but it's something that we should look at, certainly.
So you want to name it the O'Neill Sculpture Gardens, I'll support it.
It would be the Grant Family supplemented by the O'Neills.
That's funny, awesome, okay. All right, before we do public comment on non-agenda items, why don't we do public comment on this third item we just covered for an hour and a half? It's a long, long time.
Nancy Gardner, I'm not a big fan of public funding for the arts for a number of reasons. But the thing that strikes me is, looking at the figures, we are such a wealthy community, and the foundation is contributing $10,000? I mean, how much support is that? We should be, I think, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars if there was the kind, sorry, I'm screwing this up, kind of universal support for public funding, so.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Nancy Scarborough, I want to go back, if I could, to code enforcement, because we didn't have comments on that. I have three questions. On residential care facilities, is the cost of, I noticed on my street, there's a new home that has just recently been identified, and there was a paramedic truck and a fire truck there last week. Who foots the bill for the cost of those services for the residential homes, residential care homes? Are they reimbursing us? Are those costs being forwarded to them? And are they eligible for the fire medics program as a business? Because I'm not sure that you can discriminate. However, I have a bit of a problem subsidizing that from the city. Second question is, as we're converting part-time to full-time, are we considering the cost of, the other costs of employment? When I have an employee, their hourly rate or their salary is one thing, but then there are additional insurance costs, there's retirement, and the retirement not only goes for what you put into it, but that's long-term. So that adds to the cost of those positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Roser. The diversity of topics in these long sessions makes it difficult to comment. Earlier in this session, we heard the council being promised that we would have our pension liability paid down in the next eight years. I think as the council understands, that's speculation. I wouldn't bet on that very strongly. Depends on how Coppers does. Returning to the code enforcement, I think there are many residents who were probably surprised if they heard that we're currently patrolling the city and proactively clamping down on gas leaf blowers. Certainly not happening in my neighborhood. And then we heard about the refuse enforcement. We're very proud, apparently, we have a 90% already diversion rate for organics in our residential areas. I think part of that is because a lot of the green carts are being filled with green waste yard trimmings in areas like where I live. But I believe there also is a state requirement that's probably harder to meet, which is that you're not contaminating the black cart with organic material. And I would doubt in all parts of our city that all of our residents are being very careful not to put any food waste in there. And I think you may have an obligation to actually issue citations if they're not doing that. So you may be concerned how we're doing on that. It was interesting to hear that Mayor O'Neill is still participating in some kind of working group that knows all about these things. group that knows all about these things. The public doesn't even know the working group exists and never hears about their meetings or what their, their results are. And then finally, as to the cultural arts, that there was reference to a policy that the council has. It does have a policy called I-10 that needs some looking at. It does dedicate a certain amount of money. It also creates something called a Arts and Culture Reserve Fund that the council at one time was committed to contributing to. That fund, which would fund a master plan for arts, kind of worked on that at one time, never ended, never came to fruition. That policy really needs some revision. It's very out of date. It quotes a $55,000 number as a commitment to grants or something that is, has no relation to what the council currently does. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, bring it back. To clarify, I am not on a working group. You're right, that went away a long time ago. That was, that was council members Dixon and Brenner and me. And two of them are not on council any longer, and that does not exist. The, coming back to the questions, so on the residential care facilities, that might be an errant question first.
Yeah, just, just briefly, I think it's important to note that for this whole discussion of code enforcement and the residential care facilities, there are state laws that require the city to treat licensed six and under facilities the same as any other residential use. So I want to make sure that everyone knows that the context of the discussion regarding code enforcement and the residential care facilities is in that context.
Got it. And then so in terms of how the, how, you know, if, if a, if a paramedic is called out, treated just like if it was responding to a home?
That's, that's right, you have to treat the same as any other residential use to the, it's a licensed facility of six and under.
And then it's a fair question on the question about our fire medics program. How does that work? If you don't know the answer, you can come back at some point, but how does that work?
So the fire paramedic program, you can sign up for basically a service through the city where you pay a fee, and then you, for that set fee, you could be transported to the hospital via ambulance as part of that program. I'm not sure if the fire chief's here, if he wants to add anything to it or not, but that's, that's generally what the program's about.
Yeah, I guess the question is, there, there is a different fee, if I recall correctly, like if I got it, which I do, unfortunately, I haven't used it, but if I did, but, but I, I pay it every year. But if there is a, a business using it, they, they pay a different fee, if I recall correctly.
A business would, but not a licensed residential care facility.
Okay, and that's the question. All right. And then the question about full-time, part-time costs, I'll defer to Grace on that.
Yes, there are certainly additional costs when you go from part-time to full-time, but I will note when we have employees, if they're working more than 1,000 hours in a year, they are enrolled in, we're required to put them into a pension plan. So it is a little bit differential depending on, at what level we have the part-time employees. And I will also note with Peppera, the pension formula is much lower, and employees are paying a considerable amount on their employee contribution to that there. And then on a larger scale too, we've talked about this a bit, probably starting two years ago or so, as we continue to look and ensure retention of employees and attraction, people are looking for full-time work. So if we want to have consistency and longer-term employees, that, that is a factor too, frankly, in part of that discussion.
Got it. Okay. All right, before we conclude, any other discussion up here? That's good. All right, public comment on non-agenda items.
Now for something completely different, Monty Python fans. Nancy Gardner. I think everybody in, in the city basically is familiar now with our RENA numbers that we have, of almost 5,000 units we have to plan for. I think almost nobody knows that our state-certified housing element calls for twice-out. And there's a very good reason, because that's the way we think we might be able to meet our affordable requirements. But I think that with, given the market and with certain state laws, we could end up with even more of that if we don't plan carefully. And what I would like to encourage the city to do is really focus on the affordable aspect, which is workforce housing, senior housing, starter homes for our kids and grandkids. And three suggestions. One is to reopen the issue of inclusionary zoning, not necessarily citywide, but are there areas where we might be able to use it and increase the number? To me, the other benefit of that is simply that it shows the state, even if you decide, no, you know, our first take was right, it shows the state that we are really taking this seriously. We're reopening issues to make sure that we can meet our needs. The second is to explore incentives for employers to do employee housing. You think of Hoag, which dominates the West Newport Mesa, which is one of those areas designated for higher density. And if they could have some employee housing, not only would we increase our affordable numbers, but we would also have people, instead of driving in every day, walking to work and increasing our, our circulation benefits. And finally, to support all of us in many ways as we can, the housing trust, because this is the only entity in the city that's really focused strictly on affordability. And if we do this, I think if the city really focuses on that, we can keep our numbers down closer to the original, to their original RENA requirements than to some of these other numbers that we are hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work you're doing on the general plan update. Obviously, you and I will be spending some time together this year. Next speaker, please.
Jim, Jim Roser again. As a non-agenda item, I would like to comment, I think, on the planning session itself. It may be helpful for the council at some time, the council members, to kind of review what planning sessions were at one time in the city of Newport Beach, and also perhaps what other cities call a planning session for their city council. Over the last eight years or so, these have kind of morphed into a very fixed format, where it's providing feedback from the council to the city manager on kind of the nuts and bolts of the budget. It's not kind of considering broader vision for what the city should be doing in the coming year. It's very useful for you to be doing this, but kind of that other broader visioning is not really happening here. It's kind of not the topic today. So perhaps there is some other kind of planning session that you should be doing. People watching this will notice some big priorities for the city are not being touched on here at all today. We sometimes hear the airport is our number one priority. There's no direction to the city staff as to how much they should be focusing on that. We have an aviation committee with two council members involved to see council as a whole as not looking at that issue. You know, many people are concerned about homelessness. We've not heard anything about the plan for that or the direction, how much focus there should be on that. We heard about the, the RENA issue that's coming up. What is our plan? How are we going to provide the affordable housing that we have to do? And many other issues that I'm sure you can think of. So perhaps total focus on the budget and feedback on that should not be the be-all and end-all of city council planning sessions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Charles Klob. The Newport Mesa Unified School District has convened a 711 committee. Our Sean Levin sits on that committee as a resident. That committee is tasked with making a recommendation to the school board in 2024 on what to do with the 11 acres of property that they own in Newport Beach adjacent to our city yard. The committee is leaning towards a sale or lease of the property for construction of something. They're not leaning towards open space. That committee meets this coming Monday. It's attended by Nancy Scarborough, myself, and Terry Walsh, no one else. The city, I think, should take some interest in what happens with that property. There have been recommendations made for workforce housing for the school district employees. So far, that hasn't been listened to very much, but I think that this city has an interest in what happens with that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, bringing it back. I'll just conclude by saying, Jim's right, we didn't cover every issue affecting the city because that, we, we do that regularly through city council meetings. And so if next year you'd like to see a very different style for, for the agenda, by all means, enjoy yourselves. But on the planning session, but on the, but in terms of making sure that we're covering a whole lot of things in the mornings, in a morning on a Saturday, I think we did a pretty decent job. So I do appreciate, I do appreciate all of you being here away from family for a few hours. It's, it's important, we, actually, on this one, I think we ended up having a longer discussion and more direction than we have in prior years. So this has been really helpful. So anyway, again, to members of the public, thank you for being here. To all of our staff, also thank you for being here, and go enjoy your day because it's going to be really rainy tomorrow.
Thank you.